There's a lot of back and turn. Just making sure. All right.
So several of us are about to remark. All right, that's over the top.
Mics are in fact on now. Council mics are on.
Almost everything.
The longest two minutes of the week.
That will not be a problem.
This is the longest two minutes of the week.
Most knows I've ever done in 13 years of city council. I'm going to be Margaret Thatcher.
Margaret Thatcher. I thought we already got rid of her.
That has been faking. You know, the worst thing you can do is leave it vacant. The worst thing. It's gotta have air and people and exercise. And the worst thing you can do is leave it vacant.
Lauren Hibbert from the Secretary of State's office went first and talked about all the advantages. So you're good? Then they said to me, and I said, they say, they, at the end of that, they said, oh, this is good. This is giving us a lot of clarity. So I stoned off by going, I'm about to muddy the waters again. Here is mud is all there.
I was not.
We had one of our advocates get, not the ad, but got the kitchel treatment for 20 minutes one morning. And then she ends it with, she goes, I mean, you remember, these are just notes for the future. Not happy. Well, take it. Thank you. Senator, you're the best. Your happiness is not something.
I need to go first, Senator.
In the background, there's and comms.
In the background, that's what I do.
There's and comms. Okay.
Thank you.
I think I'm going to facilitate. I don't know. Maybe I'll just make it up.
My good things. I get, I get to find out on Tuesday. I'll do members of the public. There's any members in the public. That's a fun.
If you don't mind, thank you.
I don't know that we'll have. I assume Jesse will want to know. All right, seven o'clock in the chamber is Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Wazazak. It's seven o'clock.
We can't hear Jake. Hold on.
Hear me.
Selective speaker.
We'll get there.
Let's try that one. Try it now, Jake.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Like that old commercial. So at seven o'clock, and I'll call this Berry City Council meeting to order on Tuesday, April 25th, 7:00 PM. Council present tonight includes Council Lozong, Council Stockwell, Council Wazazak, Council Booton, Council Sean Bell, and Council Dearing. I'm joining remotely because I'm having a round two with Coben presently. Staff present tonight. I see manager Charlie Castro and under maybe a new haircut, Clerk Treasurer Dawes. And I'm not sure, are there other staff in the room tonight?
Nope.
We have Stephanie Caranta joining us online.
Well, welcome everyone. Tonight's agenda is available online and in the back of the room. The meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded and subject to Vermont's openly meeting law and council's rules of procedure, which are available online. I'd like to offer a warm welcome to any guests joining us tonight and members of the public. For those of you joining online like me, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties. The city offers online access as a convenience and will continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. If that occurs on my end, Council Booton, as the Vice Mayor, will fill in for me. The city, please raise your hand or signal if you'd like to be recognized. I'll call on speakers in order, allowing people who haven't spoken yet to speak first and limiting time if necessary to do the city's business. And Council Wazazak will do some air traffic control for me in the room as he always does. And, and please state your name for the record. If you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask and we'll get it sorted. And as always, I want to thank everyone in advance for participating in a civil way. With that, that takes us to item two on the agenda, adjustments to the agenda. Managers Charlie Castro.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to request council's okay to add a new item eight F, which is an authorization to do a sole source contract with Petnelli and Associates for $56,280, $56,284.59 to replace the Garfield playground structure.
All right.
We'll take it up at that time, right?
Yes, at that time. It's a new item ADF.
Yeah.
Yep. Great. All right. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda?
Not necessarily an adjustment, Mayor, but under the consent agenda, item E, I had a number of constituents reach out questioning, you know, why the city was acquiring land, taking it, you know, taking it off the tax rolls. Very thorough write-up in our packet, but I'm not sure everyone has the benefit of that. So not, not proposing that we move it as a separate agenda item, but if the manager could just give a three-minute overview of the rationale behind that decision, I'd appreciate that.
Happy to.
Yep. So great. We'll take that up when I read through the consent agenda items. Are there any other changes or adjustments to the agenda?
I would actually like to have that as a separate item.
So there's interest in pulling item four E, the acquisition of 22 lots on Maplewood and Mead Avenue.
It can stay under the consent agenda. I just want to vote it separately.
Oh, to vote it separately? Absolutely. Yeah. All right. No objections to that, I trust from council? All right, hearing and seeing none. And if there are no other adjustments to the agenda, that will take us to visitors and communications, which is an opportunity.
Have something, Mayor? If I may, thank you. So at our last council meeting, after being incorrectly identified as the current registered agent for the Wheelock House LLC, I made a comment and while the comment wasn't directed at anyone in particular, it was allowed. It was audible and it expressed my frustration. You know, the one thing that I have always believed is that when folks come to the council meeting, they need to feel welcome. They need to feel respected. They need to feel heard. And, you know, in that respect, I missed all three of those bars. And so I just wanted to apologize to everyone. You know, I never should have said it, never, never should have, you know, my frustration is my frustration. And I should never let that boil over. I should never let that, you know, I'm ashamed that I said it. And I sincerely apologize and I'll work hard that to ensure that that doesn't happen again. So thanks. Oh, and one other thing, we are required to disclose ex parte communications. Donnie Kane contacted me immediately after, not immediately, the next day or so after the vote, asked if I would consider speaking with him regarding the condition of the Wheelock House. And I just explained to Donnie, I don't think he quite understood. So I explained to Donnie that why I didn't blame him a bit for contacting me. It would not be appropriate for me to be speaking to him directly about the condition of the building while he is under contract with the city. So thank you for those two things.
Thank you, Council Lozong. Are there other items for visitors and communications?
Yep, we have Jesse in the room.
Hey there. Yep, Jesse Rosado from Merchant Street. So I just want to talk about the bus for a minute. And, you know, I think that if we all got together on July 2022, when I first came to this council and talked about the problems with the bus and these cuts and what it means. And if I said that we were going to be here on April 25th of 2023, and we would be in the exact same spot that we were back in July 2022. I, I think some people would be surprised by that, but that is, lo and behold, that's exactly where we are. We are in the exact same spot we were when these cuts happened in July of 2022. I want to reiterate that people who use the bus in town, I just want to express the importance, like, those folks are in crisis. Like unless you work banker's hours and don't have a whole lot going on, like these cuts are meaningful. If you have to like make it to work before 7:30 in the morning, like that, that bus might, might as well not exist. If you had to connect with another bus at the Mount Pater Transit Center, that bus might as well not exist. If you had to put your kids on a school bus and make it down to the bus stop and get to, to, to work efficiently, that bus might not, might as well not exist. So that's where people are at. It is a crisis for the people standing at the bus station. We had a discussion with the GMT board recently. It's, we worked really hard to get that to discussion. It took a lot, a lot of prodding. We stormed their public comment period of one of their board meetings. And Mr. Mayor, and this is with all due respect, I mean, I, you know, I'm friendly with you and Teddy, I've voted for you. I've had your lawn signs in my yard. But I want to say that, Mr. Mayor, like you, you took it into a place that wasn't, it wasn't the right place. Like you didn't catch the moment the right way, like almost you didn't understand the breadth of the problem. We went to a place of, of membership. This journey would take us to a place of, we'd have to put it in front of the voters of Berry City, what's that town meeting, 2024? We had to wait for GMT to dust off their charter and do some stuff there. And we're talking about a really long process. It begs the question, like, how long would that take for someone who's in crisis at the bus stop to feel the effects of those efforts? I'm not saying that those are the wrong efforts. I'm saying that those are separate efforts. And what the moment called for was for us to go in there and just make sure that we, that we thoroughly let the board know what our, what the problem was, where people in the city of Berry were at, and that there's a crisis going on. And what, and, and that we expect them to honor their commitments that they've been missing on for like 10 months now. And unfortunately, I think we fell a little short of the mark in that opportunity. We squandered that opportunity. I'll wrap up with this. You know, I understand that Clayton has given out weekly updates, or maybe Tim Bradshaw, whoever from GMT. And counselors, each one of you have a reply button on your email when you get those. And I hope that you'll use it and say, hey, look, still in crisis here. Please pick up the pace on this. We understand you have problems. Everybody in the world has problems. But let's get into the solution. Let's make this happen a little quicker. Because this bus service, the commuter bus service, served this community, was one of the most important buses in Washington County. It worked well for more than a decade. I'm not sure why they cut it in the first place, why they chose that to get their, their, their cuts. But the people that depend on it or could depend on it really could use that relief. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, Jesse. And, and you may or may not know, but Council Lozong also sent some follow-up questions to the GMT leadership. Reiterating some of the questions that were asked, not only about membership, but about restoration of service. We have gotten an update, just one today, with a lot of details about the, the progress they're making. They're still not there, but, but I believe we have their full attention and commitment. All, you know, and I acknowledge that it's taken a long time to get to this point, Jesse, and appreciate all that you've done to push to make sure that that happens.
Thank you, Mayor.
But I, I do think we're, I do think we're getting on track and I still think membership is a good conversation to have.
Oh, you just muted yourself, Mr. Mayor, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I got a little COVID fog. Any other visitors in communication?
Seeing none in the room.
All right. So that takes us to the consent agenda. So we have a couple items. And one of them, the manager's going to give a little bit of an update on and take it up separately. We have approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, 2023. We have the city warrants of the week of April 19th, 2023, and approval of the city warrants from the week of April 26th, 2023. We have the clerk's office licenses and permits. Are there any to report on, Carol?
No.
No. Except to accept the resignation of committee and task force members as outlined in the memo. And then the last item will take up separately. Is there a motion to approve the first items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. That portion of the consent agenda is adopted. That takes us to authorization of the manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of 22 vacant lots on Maplewood and Mead Avenues for the purpose of expanding the cow pasture. Manager Charlie Castro.
Thank you, Mayor. So this was really an exciting opportunity that became available to the city recently. And this is to expand, make a big expansion of the cow pasture down Maplewood Avenue and Mead Avenue, which is a paper street for folks who may want to be wondering where it is. This, this has been, this tract of land was previously owned by the Fords, was recently purchased by Mr. Brad Eastman. And this has been a high priority acquisition target for the cow pasture stewardship committee. For quite some time, it was identified in the 2017 management plan. And beyond having significant conservation value, it, it has really high recreational value, allowing the, the cow pasture committee to work to expand trails in the, in the area. You know, beyond that, this is a, this is land that's undevelopable. So this is not land that the city is really sort of taking off the, the market, so to speak, for, for building. This has ledge. This has really difficult grades. So most of this, all of this land really is, is really not developable in any way. And so there, there's value in preserving it for what it is, which is a natural space, which is connected to one of our most wonderful natural spaces and recreational facilities, the cow pasture. The, you know, as part of this sort of use of this land, the some, two, two lots of the former Ford property are being developed for housing. So I think in the truest sense, this is really a win-win for the city in that there will be housing built where housing can be built. And that's, there's two lots that are immediately adjacent to Maplewood Avenue. And the remainder of this land will remain wild and preserved. So we look forward to working. There's, there's neighbors that, but this, this property, we look forward to working with them. Look forward to working with the cow pasture committee. I see a couple of members here in the audience about how we make use of this space for recreational value. And overall, I think it's a great, it's a great thing to do for our city and for one of our greatest natural resources.
Motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion or comments from the public?
Yeah. So I just want to state the reason why I'm going to be voting no on this, and I apologize, Chris. I, I just, I have a, an issue with the, it's a purchase of the 22 lots or 25 lots. That we're purchasing 22, but it was originally 25. Three of the best were taken out. We're paying a little bit more than what the person paid for. So that's, that's where my gripe is on this and that's it. If it was a little bit cheaper, I would be a different conversation.
We understand, Michael. I look at, look at it a little differently. I remember presiding over the school board when we took a very large tract of land off the tax rolls because we wanted to do, build a new central school because the educational opportunities in our city just weren't equal when you went ward to ward. So I get it. I, I drive a hard bargain as much as anyone, but I, I just look at it in terms of opportunity. And the, the current cost, I think the taxes, I might be wrong.
They're under 700.
Yeah. You know, I just look at the opportunity. I don't want, I don't want to lose the opportunity to provide better access over a few thousand dollars. I, I respect you. I respect your opinion, but I'm going to vote yes for this.
Are there further comments?
Seeing none.
All right, hearing and seeing none is, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but since it's a divided vote, it does have to be roll call.
Yeah, yeah. Council Lozong.
Aye.
Council Sean Bell.
Aye.
Council Booton.
Nay.
Council Wazazak.
Aye.
Council Stockwell.
Aye.
Council Dearing.
Aye.
And I am an a as well.
Thank you.
With that, that takes us back to you, Clerk Treasurer Dawes.
Yep, just a few things, a continuing reminder that we've got an election coming up on May 9th. That's two weeks from today. This is for voting on the revised school budget. So far, we have mailed out 620 ballots. We've received about 230 of them back. We continue to get a handful of requests every day and we'll continue to mail them out right up until just before the election. People can also come into the office to vote in person if they'd like to do that before the election. We will continue to spread the word that we're voting at the old Labor Hall that day because the civic center and the auditorium are, are busy that day with the state highway show. So people will be voting at the Labor Hall, which is at 46 Granite Street. We're getting the word out through various social media and we're working on some signage, et cetera. So we encourage people to vote early or in the office or by mail or come by the Labor Hall on the, on the 9th. A good opportunity to see it if you haven't been inside recently. The fourth quarter property taxes are due May 15th. That's the last tax on the current bill. So all the usual payment methods are available. Come into the office, use the drop boxes, pay online. You can also still sign up for another, probably through the end of this week, you can still sign up for direct debit. So those are the, the last taxes for this year before the next bill comes out after the 1st of July. And lastly, the clerk's office is going to be closed this Thursday all day. The Assistant Treasurer and I are going to an all-day training. So we're looking forward to having that opportunity to learn a bunch of stuff and network with other clerks and treasurers around the state. And actually, I do have one more thing. Our Assistant Clerk Cheryl Mativier, a couple of weeks ago, moved on to the finance department. She's working as a senior accounting clerk up there. A great opportunity for her to learn a whole bunch of new skills. And we're fortunate enough to have filled the position already. Our new Assistant Clerk, I'm not releasing names yet, but our new Assistant Clerk is scheduled to start in two weeks. So we look forward to having somebody new in the office. So that's all I have.
Congratulations, girl. Are there any questions for the Clerk or Treasurer?
Council Booton.
When's the announcement? So thanks. Hang us out there. So when's the announcement?
First initial is a B. We'll do one letter at a time.
No, I'm not. I, I understand you can't, I'm just asking when.
I, I would imagine certainly before the end of this week. We're just waiting for her to return the signed offer letter. So just to be on the safe side. We're very excited.
You get the two letters in Vermont and you'll probably figure out who it is.
That's why you're just getting the one.
Can I buy a vowel?
Real question is, she's a Berry City citizen.
She is not.
That's a shame.
It's interesting. I met with the Senate Government Operations Committee today. There, that's where a lot of charter changes start, either in House GovOps or Senate GovOps. And one of the things they're talking about is the growing number of charter changes moving from elected clerks and treasurers to appointed clerks and treasurers. And the pros and cons and, you know, are there concerns about taking an independent elected office and turning it into a staff position? But one of the, the pros is finding people who can fill these positions within the demographics of the community. Berry is pretty good sized, so we don't, haven't had any problems in the past finding clerks and treasurers, but very small communities have a really tough time. So to, to hold us to city residents can be problematic. So. That's it. I'm off my soapbox.
All right. If there are no further questions for the Clerk Treasurer, that takes us to our liquor and cannabis control board. I think we wrapped up most of the liquor items last week. Are there any stragglers or?
No, I did want to just let you know that last, two weeks ago, I, I asked you to approve a number of license renewals with contingencies that they get their paperwork done and that they get their fees into the city. And all of those particular license holders have completed those steps. And so everybody is all good to go with their license renewal. So I'm pleased about that. This is a new system with the online portal. So I was happy everybody was able to make things work.
Great to hear. And with no liquor or cannabis items on the table, we have, our city manager's report is item number seven.
Thanks, Mayor. Couple of updates for council. Follow-up from the committee reset. All the new committees that the council rearranged have had an opportunity to meet. In the next few weeks, we'll be going through the appointments, reappointment process. So we'll be putting out solicitations in the Times August, the website, social media. We'll be contacting committee members whose terms are up. And of course, council will have to go through the interviews and hopefully that they could start coming up as early as May 23rd. We have to do the solicitation for three weeks. So if we're able to get things out, we might be able to, to hit that meeting for first round of. So if we're able to get things out, we might be able to to hit that meeting for first round of interviews for Council to conduct. Update on the the Route three oh two Water Main Replacement Project. This was part of Senator Sanders' congressionally directed spending. So we received our guidance from the EPA to begin sort of the the administrative part of this grant. As a reminder, the grant was for two point two million, we have a twenty percent match. And though we we may have an opportunity, we're looking through the EPA guidance, there may be an opportunity to waive that based on some of the parameters for high need communities. So fingers crossed, we we could, we could get that that taken care of. So next steps is we'll be hearing from the EPA staff in the next few weeks to assess the readiness of the project. And just for heads up, they did tell us they're still working with fiscal year twenty two recipients. So there, there may be some time, they're they're working with a lot of projects still. DPW very busy last week in addition to just a series of water main issues to address. They also started in an exciting way, the the work on Warren Street. They began preparing Warren and Merchant for paving, and that included sidewalk replacements, some water and sewer replacements going on through the week. I know I was up there today and they've sort of laid out the where the new sidewalks are coming in. So very excited that that's moving forward. Last week, we announced the dates and times for when Berry City residents can use the town's disposals, yard waste disposal site on Upper Holden Road. Those dates begin April twenty ninth and run through May twenty third. So please check our website, social media sites for the details of those opportunities. There's some rules about what you can bring up there, how branches have to be cut. So there's flyers posted on our website and and social media to to give you all the details you need to use that. As I mentioned in our announcement, we will be doing a pick up date as well. That will be announced, and it will be arranged around our our busy paving schedule this summer. So expect that to, well, it'll be in the spring, but expect that to be arranged around our paving preparation. And then just finally, ask for Council's indulgence to give you the names of the distinguished artists whose art is displayed around the chamber. Want to thank Kate Holly, who's the K four art teacher at Berry City Elementary for bringing art from students across the, I think it's both Town and City Elementary School are represented here. But from grade one, we have Natalie Lamell and Timmy Bisson. From grade two, Juno Carr, Skylar Bickmore. From grade three, Alif Stratton Ezra Denton. From grade four, Salma Albatine, Henry Booth, Liam Carslaw, Aria Dane Violet Rancourt. Fifth graders, Audrey Maring, Sophie Motryek and Bailey Morris. And we have some eighth grade art from Media Dane, Ayla Edwards Partlow, Aiden Powers and Lily Charbonneau. So thank Ms. Holly for letting us have these adorn our council. They're not for sale, I've been entrusted with them, they'll be going back to the students and parents at the end of the of the school year. That's all for me, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any questions for the City Manager?
One thing that I might mention is, just as a reminder, we do have Green Up Day bags in the clerk's office. Stop by, pick them up, there's also a sign in sheet, so you let the green up coordinators know what neighborhoods or streets you're going to be doing. So we're, you know, less, less than two weeks away from Green Up Day, so we want to make sure people are aware of it, so.
There's one follow up on that.
Green Up Day. That's right, yeah. Sarah's got her hand up.
Well, I see, yeah, I see Sarah, you have your hand up. But one question on Green Up Day, though, is, is the final poster, has the poster been finalized to be able to post and share around the city? Has anybody seen that? If not, we can touch base with Gwen.
I haven't seen it, haven't seen one in the office.
Yeah, I thought it was finalized, I haven't seen it posted, no.
Right. Sarah Holman.
Good, good evening. I had a question about the spot on Pleasant Street where there was the Water Main Break. Is there, what is the plan to to pave that road and when will that start? Because that's, that particular spot is pretty not even, I don't know what the right word is, but it's pretty bumpy and and just wondering what the plan is.
Thanks, Sarah. Yeah, so the DPW crews are waiting for the hot mix, I guess, plant, I'm not sure what the right, the hot mix plant in Burlington to be open and available. They have, if you've noticed around the city, there's a couple of basins, for example, that have the the warning cones. They're waiting for that hot mix plant to be open so they can come back and repave. So that applies to Pleasant Street, it applies to, I know Washington Street, I see a couple of basins that need work. The the place where the the intersection by Mr. Z's where we had the the main break a couple of weeks ago. They're waiting for that hot mix to be able to clean all that stuff up.
Do we have a timeline?
I think the plan might open, they're just waiting for the plant to open, it might open as as soon as this week. As soon as it's open, they're gonna go up there with a couple trucks.
Awesome, thank you.
And then I think the paving contract does allow until completion at the very latest by November first, twenty twenty three.
Yeah, but I, yeah, and I, sorry to interrupt, Mayor, I I don't think Sarah was talking about a paving project per se. I think this was related to a main break that was broke, torn up and repaired, and so they, our guys will repair that kind of stuff with hot mix.
That's correct.
But but Pleasant Street is from the curb on Beckley Street to Garcia Lane is is on the paving project list, right? Jamie Bauer.
Hi, thank you. How far down are you going on to Merchant Street for the street repair? We're at fifty two Merchant.
I I don't think it's going too far away from that intersection. If you send me an email, citymanager@berrycity.org, I'll get you the the plans from the state. This is a state project, so I I don't have the details at my fingertips, but my understanding from when the Public Works Director and I were briefed is that it's not coming too far up the intersection after they make that T. But if, send me an email, please, and I'll I'll get you the details.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions for the City Manager? All right, hearing and see. Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to our first item of new business, which is VLCT Training on Open Meeting Law, Public Records Act and Conflicts of Interest. Manager Charlie Cashman?
Yeah, so, thanks, Mayor. Garrett just ran out of the room here a second ago, he'd been waiting here patiently, so I'm hoping he'll be here any minute now to do the training. What I can say is we have, the city has a attorney client type relationship with VLCT. So Garrett's training, we're doing it in an open session, but questions, Garrett can only answer questions from members of the council. So just a heads up for members of the public who may have questions that he, due to our attorney client relationship, he cannot answer those questions. So I just want to, that was in my memo, but I want to make sure to be upfront about that.
And I'll share that on the VLCT website, they've got a lot of information, good information about open meeting laws, public records, and the website is open to the public. So if you, if you go to the website, if you have any questions or give us a call.
Yeah, and and I think, and there shouldn't be an issue, but Garrett will be doing a presentation and we should be able to post it. That won't be a concern either, we'll make that available. But hopefully, we have barbecue dates, maybe? See, we can do that.
Yeah, we should do that.
Rip that one off quick.
If you're gonna do that, you gotta take it off, oh, there we go.
Never mind.
Safe by the bell.
Do you want me to use the mic?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
That way, that's for the folks on the computer.
Sure. Hey. All right, so we looked at the podium and now the podium's gone away.
Good evening, Garrett.
Good evening.
Hey, Garrett, just give me a pointer, tell me next slide whenever we want to.
Oh, okay, sure, I wasn't, wasn't exactly sure how we were gonna do that.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. My name is Garrett Baxter, I'm the Senior Staff Attorney with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Municipal Assistance Center, or MAC for short. And if you're not familiar with VLCT, I don't know, how many people are relatively new? Okay. Well, different capacity. So for those of you who are unfamiliar with VLCT, we're an independent, nonprofit, nonpartisan, membership based organization wholly owned by and serving all of Vermont's municipalities. So our mission at VLCT is to serve and strengthen Vermont local government. Municipal Assistance Center is the education and training arm of VLCT, and it's comprised of myself, our Executive Director Abby Friedman, our Research and Information Associate Heather La, and three other attorneys, Carl Andere, Susan Senning, and Kale Romanoff. And our job collectively is to provide you with the education, training and professional services you need to carry out your statutory responsibilities. So I'm here to talk to you tonight about Vermont's Trio of Transparency Laws, or some refer to them as Sunshine Laws. Those are the Open Meeting Law, Public Records Act and Conflict of Interest Prohibition. So these laws cover a lot of ground. Each topic, we usually spend an hour and a half presentation on each one. But to expect you to sit here through four and a half hours of presentations is a little unrealistic and to to learn everything there is to know about these laws and to expect you to process and retain it all. So that's why the goal for tonight's presentation is just an overview. It's to raise your awareness of these laws, introduce you to them, cover the basics so that you'll have a firm foundation on which to build. So a lot of the finer details and specifics of these laws are covered in our frequently asked questions, which I've included in your folder packets and along with other related resources that you can find on our website. You'll likely have a lot of questions as we move through the presentation, so a built in sometime at the end of each section, which they're relatively short. So please hold off on any questions you may have until then. We'll also open the floor up to any questions you have at the end on any of the three topics. I may not be able to get to all your questions before our time is up tonight. And some questions may be so fact specific that I'll have to touch base with you individually later on. But rest assured, I'll get back to you with any questions that I'm not able to tackle tonight. So next slide, please. So before we dive into the substance of this presentation, I need to say a quick word about municipal governance charters, since your city has one. The laws that I'm going to go over tonight are laws of general applicability, meaning that they apply to all municipalities in the state, cities, towns, villages, et cetera. But not all municipalities follow the same laws at the same time. Some municipalities have laws that only apply to them, which is what a municipal governance charter is. It's a grant of special legislation to an individual municipality, allowing it to deviate from the general law that would otherwise apply. Any municipality can have one, and municipalities have them for different reasons. They can be found in the appendix to Title twenty four of the Vermont statutes annotated, those green books in Carol's Office. Berry City's own charter can be found in Chapter one, so you're the, you're the first one in the appendix in the list of charters. I did perform a little cursory search of review of Berry City's charter and added some of the provisions to the presentation tonight where appropriate, but you're likely going to be more familiar with it than I am. So in case I've missed anything, just be aware that whenever there's a conflict between laws of general applicability and your governance charter, that your charter will typically control as it's the more specific of the two. Next slide, please. With that, other way, the topic again for tonight's presentation is an overview of Vermont's transparency laws. Violations of the public trust occur when transparency in local government is obscured. Creating an atmosphere of openness and disclosure is the best method to achieve transparency in governmental operations. And it all begins with complying with these three laws. And we're going to start with Vermont's Open Meeting Law. Next slide, please. What is the Open Meeting Law and why do we have it? Very generally, the Open Meeting Law regulates meetings of governmental or public bodies. It does this by establishing certain minimum standards for meetings as a way of ensuring government accountability. The Vermont Supreme Court tells us that the purpose of the Open Meeting Law is to give the public, is to give public exposure to governmental decision making. The law advances the openness, accessibility and transparency of public meetings to enable the public to serve both as an active participant in your meetings as well as a check on local government. So in this regard, the Open Meeting Law implements the state constitutional principle that all governmental officers are trustees and servants of the people and are at all times accountable to them. So we have the Open Meeting Law, therefore, to hold you, the government, accountable for the words you say and the actions you take. Next slide, please. But who exactly does it apply to? Specifically, it applies to every public body of a municipality. The law defines a public body to include all boards, councils or commissions of a political subdivision of the state, which includes municipalities. The term public body is an intentionally very broad definition and necessarily includes two groups. The first consists of any statutory public body, those bodies explicitly mentioned in Vermont's law. Those include your Cemetery Commission, Development Review Board, your city council. And the second group consists of any board, body, committee or commission created by one of those statutory public bodies, including any committee or subcommittee created by the city council. So the definition of a public body also includes any committee of any of the foregoing boards, councils or commissions. The word of in that sentence imparts agency when one party acts on behalf of another. So part of the analysis in determining whether the Open Meeting Law applies and whether a group is a public body is asking whether there is some act of delegation, whether a resolution creating the public body or some acknowledgement that would, the body would be recognized as a public body on the cities and to act on the city's behalf. If so, then it's most likely a public body and will need to follow the requirements of the Open Meeting Law. So in order to avoid any confusion, it's important to distinguish in your meeting minutes between those times when you as a city council create a public body and those times when you're just collaborating with a group of citizens on a project. Next slide. So all local government public bodies are governed by the Open Meeting Law, but when does it apply? It applies whenever a public body is holding a meeting, which the law defines as a gathering of a quorum of the members of the public body for the purpose of discussing the business of the public body or for the purpose of taking action. Next slide. So breaking that definition down, we see that there are three elements that must be in present in order for the Open Meeting Law to apply. One, there needs to be a public body. Two, there needs to be a quorum of that public body. And three, there needs to be, that quorum must be gathered to discuss the business of the public body or for the purpose of taking action. If all three elements aren't in place, then there can be no meeting and the Open Meeting Law won't apply. We've already gone over the first element by defining what a public body is. The second element is that there must be a gathering of a quorum of the members of the public body. Quorum represents the minimum number of members a public body needs in order to meet. Unless the law specifically states otherwise, the general rule for counting a quorum is that it's a simple majority, fifty percent plus one of the total membership of the public body. So Section three oh three of your charter says that a majority of the city council shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. And Section three oh one subsection one says that the city council shall consist of the mayor and two counselors for each ward. So since Berry City has three wards, that makes for six counselors, plus the mayor, makes for a total of seven on your city council. This means you will always need at least four members, a majority of the city council, to hold the meeting, which represents its bare quorum number. Now, when it comes to counting your quorum number, you count the number of chairs at your tables, not the number of people in them. So this number will remain the same regardless of whether members abstain, whether they recuse themselves or if there are absences or vacancies on your public body. This bare quorum is also the minimum number of members you're going to need to take any action as a board. The third and final element is that a quorum of the public body must be gathered to discuss the business of the public body. Law defines the business of the public body as the public body's governmental functions, including any matter over which the public body has supervision, control, jurisdiction or advisory power. So basically, any matter to be discussed or action to be taken that pertains to the city council will be considered its business. And given its broad statutory powers, the business of the council virtually covers anything having to do with the city. Next slide. So once all three of these elements are met, there's a gathering of quorum of the members of the public body for the purpose of discussing the business of the public body or for the purpose of taking action. Then the Open Meeting Law is triggered and you have to follow its requirements. These requirements include publicly noticing your meetings. Notice requirements are different under the law depending on whether you're holding a regular, special or emergency meeting. Two, creating and posting an agenda for all regular and special meetings. Your meeting agendas can only be added to or deleted from as a first course of business at your meeting, so it's a good idea. so it's a good idea to always have that as one of the first orders of business, which I saw that you did, which is great. There's no requirement to have an agenda for an emergency meeting. Three, you need to keep your meetings open to the public unless an explicit statutory exemption applies. Four, you have to provide a reasonable opportunity for the public to comment on your meeting agenda, subject to reasonable rules, procedure designed to maintain order. And five, you have to take minutes. That provide a true indication of the business of your meeting, and you have to post them within five calendar days of your meeting. Next slide. Not everything you do as a public body, however, is governed by the Open Meeting Law. The law does carve out some discreet exceptions where communications between a quorum of members is permissible without triggering the requirements of the Open Meeting Law, because these activities are explicitly excluded from the definition of what is a meeting under the law. These include scheduling a meeting, organizing agenda, distributing materials to other members to discuss at your meeting so long as no other business of the public body is discussed or conducted, and that any resulting written communication, so if you're having a communication about your agenda via email, that has to be made available for public inspection and copying under the Public Records Act. The Open Meeting Law also doesn't apply when a quorum of your council attends social gatherings, conventions, conferences, training programs such as this one, or otherwise gathers, providing that those of you attending don't discuss business that at the time you're gathering, you expect to take up as business at a later date. And finally, a quorum of members of public body can gather at a duly-warned meeting of another public body provided that the attending public body doesn't take action on its own business. So that means that the planning commission can attend one of your meetings without having to warn it as a meeting of the planning commission so long as they don't take action on their business. Next slide. There are also several exemptions to the Open Meeting Law for you to be aware of. These are times when the law would ordinarily apply, but due to the nature of your meeting, they're exempt from its requirements. The two big exemptions that get most frequently tossed around and confused are deliberative and executive sessions. An executive session is a closed portion of an open meeting, but it's only for discussion of a list of certain topics specifically provided for in law. It's important to keep in mind that the use of executive session exemption will be strictly construed by the courts, which means that any reasonable doubt as to whether an exemption applies or not will be resolved in favor of keeping your meetings open to the public. In other words, when it comes to executive session, when in doubt, you want to stay out. In contrast, a deliberative session is held in conjunction with a quasi-judicial hearing. This is when you're acting like a court. This occurs when you're holding vicious dog hearing cases or tax appeals as members of the Board of Civil Authority. Deliberative session allows public bodies to deliberate and private, much like a jury does, so that you can freely weigh, examine, and discuss the reasons for or against a decision based upon the evidence you receive during a public hearing. Just to clarify, because there seems to be a lot of confusion around this, you can't use deliberative session whenever you just want to make a decision. It can only be used in the context of a quasi-judicial court-like hearing. So while neither of these exemptions have to be used under the law, there certainly will be times when using them will be in the best interest of the city, and that's where your judgment, individual judgment's going to come into play. The Open Meeting Law also exempts from its requirements site inspections for purposes of assessing damage or making tax assessments for abatements, clerical work or work assignments of staff, and routine day-to-day administrative matters that don't require action by the public body so long as no public money is expended. Next slide. Now, in terms of how you actually conduct your meetings, the law allows for in-person meetings, hybrid meetings such as this one, and for the time being, to meet remotely without designating a physical location for the public to attend. Ordinarily gathering electronically would require designating at least one physical location where public can attend your meeting. However, the state has once again temporarily lifted this requirement of the Open Meeting Law with the passage of Act 1, so that you may now meet entirely remotely. This temporary law also allows public bodies to electronically post meeting agendas and special meeting notices. Act 1 is set to sunset on July 1, 2024, but until then, you can continue to meet entirely remotely so long as you use technology that allows the public to attend by electronic or other means, allow the public to access the meeting by telephone, include and post information in your meeting agenda that allows the public to electronically access and participate in your meetings, and record your meetings if it's a meeting of the city council unless unusual circumstances make it impossible to do so. Next slide. And finally, you should be aware that there are consequences for violating the Open Meeting Law. These include potential criminal liability for any individual who knowingly violates the law, a civil lawsuit against the offending public body, and the risk that any action it takes may not be valid. The main takeaway here is to avoid all intentional violations of the Open Meeting Law and to contact either ourselves at the Municipal Assistance Center or your own city attorney if you commit any inadvertent violations of the law or if you receive any written complaints alleging that you've somehow violated the Open Meeting Law. Next slide. If you'd like to learn more about the Open Meeting Law, I encourage you to visit our website's Open Meeting Law Resources page. Next slide, please. And here you'll find all the resources listed on the slide and more, including our Open Meeting Law FAQs, which I've included in your packet. And these include answers to frequently asked questions we've received over the years on this topic. We're continuously updating these resources and developing new ones as you need them. And with that, next slide, please. Does anyone have any questions about the Open Meeting Law before we turn to the Public Records Act?
Um, just want to confirm with regards to deliberative sessions. It's my understanding that they can be used in instances where there's going to be a written decision, a quasi-judicial, like...
Yeah, it's not dictated by the fact that there's a written decision, but that there's a quasi-judicial decision. So in the context of a court-like hearing. And those do result in a written decision by law, either through the minutes or a separate written decision. So yes, that's fine. This is a lot to throw at you. As I said, we're kind of going fast and furious, and it is an overview of these laws in a short period of time. So please feel free to review the materials afterwards and to always contact us if you have any questions. Yes, Michael?
Facebook groups.
Ah, that's a good question. Okay. We address that in our FAQs. The best, it's not, it's a question of first impression, which means that it hasn't ultimately been decided or settled yet by the Vermont Supreme Court. The problem is that the Open Meeting Law doesn't explicitly account for it. So, but we always provide the most conservative legal advice possible in order to keep you out of legal harms way. Our advice on that is to, certainly you can reach out individually as a counselor to your constituency. It's a great way to keep in touch with the people of Barry City. However, once you get to the point where you implicate a quorum of the board in messaging on Facebook or any social media, you run the risk that you're now holding a public meeting because there's a quorum of the members of the board that are gathered for the purposes of discussing public business. And you're doing so in violation of the Open Meeting Law. So we would suggest be very cautious of that and to avoid that at all times.
Appreciate that answer. Sure.
The same would go with any group platforms for working on, say, bylaw revisions or ordinance revisions. Sending it, say, for example, with the use of email, sending an email to other members of the council for terms of, for purposes of distributing prior to a meeting is fine. But once you get in a back-and-forth with other members, that's again where you can run afoul of the law. We don't have a definitive answer from the court, but looking at other jurisdictions, they tend to lean in that direction for laws that are similar to ours. Great. Okay. And again, I'll open the floor up to any questions on any of these topics at the end. But next slide, please. We'll move on to the Public Records Act. We'll start this one the same way we did with the Open Meeting Law by asking what it is and why we have it. The Public Records Act, or PRA, is a law that defines what a public record is, who can see it, how and when it can be accessed, and what happens when it's violated. Not to be confused with the Freedom of Information Act or FOIA, which is the federal law that gives the people the right to access information from the federal government. Vermont's Public Records Act sets forth the terms and conditions by which the public can access government records in Vermont. Next slide. Why do we have the Public Records Act? The law's statement of policy says that "it exists for the free and open examination of records consistent with Chapter 1, Article 6 of the Vermont Constitution." That provision of our constitution says that "all power being originally inherent and consequently derived from the people; therefore, all officers of government, whether legislative or executive, are their trustees and servants and at all times in a legal way accountable to them." Public records document the legal responsibilities of government. They help protect the rights of citizens, and they provide them a means of monitoring government programs and measuring the performance of public officials. So just as was the case with the Open Meeting Law, the Public Records Act, by codifying the right to open access to public records, helps ensure that you, the government, are held accountable to the people. As the Vermont Supreme Court said, "access to governmental records is a fundamental precept of our society, and democracy cannot function unless the people are permitted to know what their government is up to." For this reason, the Public Records Act, according to the court, represents a strong policy favoring access to public documents and records. In furtherance of this goal, the law contains an instruction to those who must comply with it and to courts who must interpret it for it to be liberally construed in favor of access to public records and feel the burden of proof on withholding access to be on the government. That instruction can basically be boiled down to, "when in doubt, allow access to the records." Next slide. Did we go one forward or one behind?
This was the previous one.
I'm sorry?
This was the previous one that we were just on.
Okay, great. So yes, this is fine.
Okay.
So it's important to understand this law only deals with public records as that term is defined in law. Law defines a public record as "any written or recorded information, regardless of physical form or characteristics, that is produced or required in the course of agency business." And this is a very broad definition. It necessarily means that where a record is located won't always dictate whether it's public or not. Rather, it'll be whether the record was produced or acquired in the course of agency business. So nor is a public record limited to just a paper document, as this definition encompasses any written or recorded information regardless of physical form. So taken together, this means that a public record can exist anywhere. It can be on a computer, whether work or personal, or even your smartphone. The use of private accounts and personal devices therefore won't prevent an otherwise public record from being subject to inspection and copying. In short, if a record is produced or acquired in the course of agency business, then it's a public record. Now, there may very well be some exemption to disclosure that applies to that particular record, but we always start our analysis of any public records request by first assuming that all records are public, and then we go from there. Next slide. So who does the Public Records Act apply to? The law says that any person may inspect or copy any public record of a public agency. So the law is for the benefit of the public. Every person has a right to access public records, whether they're a resident of the city or not. In generally speaking, it doesn't matter why someone wants a public record, so both their identity and their motive are going to be irrelevant. On the flip side of that coin, the responsibility for complying with the law is on the public agency. The public agency is defined as "any agency, board, committee, department, branch, instrumentality commission, or authority of any political subdivision of the state." Since municipalities are subdivisions of the state, this law necessarily applies to every city, agency, board, committee, et cetera. So a public agency is more specific than just the city. It's the clerk's office, the manager's office, police department, planning commission, and the city council. Each is a public agency unto itself for purposes of this particular law. Next slide. But we need to drill down even deeper than this. Who specifically is responsible for responding to a request to a public record? The law says it's the custodian of the public record who must promptly produce a record for inspection or a copy of the record. According to Vermont Supreme Court, "the custodian is the person who has custody or charge of property or papers. They're the one who has it within their power to release or communicate public records." Municipalities will have at least one custodian and will likely have more. Determining who the custodian is will be a case-by-case determination, requiring you to look at the facts surrounding the situation to see either who has it within their power to release the records or who's been designated as the person, the custodian, to respond to public records requests. This is more than one person, then only the person who's designated as the custodian need to reply. Next slide. As you can imagine, figuring out who the custodian is for any particular record could be a little confusing. But fortunately for your city, your governance charter clearly designates the city clerk as the custodian of all the city's records. Congratulations to you. Section 410 states that "the clerk shall have exclusive charge and custody of the public records of the city." In that case, if someone comes to you with a public records request, even if it's on your personal phone, don't try to respond to it on your own, or if it's an email. Send them to the city clerk. Carol will then coordinate with you. Okay? Next slide, please. Since the clerk is the custodian of all city records, I won't spend too much time on when and how they must respond. However, you should be somewhat familiar with the process as any appeals or their determinations could come to you. First, the law says that a person has a right to inspect or copy a public record during customary business hours. Term "customary business hours" unfortunately isn't defined by the law, but it does define what a business day is, which is a day that a public business agency is open to provide services. We therefore interpret customary business hours as those hours that the custodian's office, in your instance, the city clerk's office, is open to provide services to the public. Next slide, please. What exactly does the Public Records Act require the custodian to do when they receive a request for a public record? The law directs that when someone requests a public record, that the custodian shall promptly produce the record for copying or inspection. Next slide, please. Promptly, as used in the law, means immediately with little or no delay, but no more than three business days from the date of the original request. So we've already established that a business day is a day that the public agency is open to business to provide services. So that means that the city clerk's office is open to the public Monday through Friday, and a request comes in on Wednesday, that the record should be produced immediately for them if you can. But if it can't for whatever reason, then you have at least three business days from the date of the request to produce it, which would be the following Monday. When counting days, there's a law of general applicability that states when times to be reckoned from a date, you don't count that first date in the computation. Okay? So we count the last day, not the first. Next slide, please. The definition of promptly is important because as you'll see in this slide, it appears often in the law. And just to complicate, complicate matters a little more because we wouldn't need lawyers if the law was simple. There are four possible responses to a public records request, each of which is dictated by the circumstances governing the status of the public record. And you'll note, all these responses require promptly communicating the status of that record to the requister. So the four possible responses for the custodian are to: one, promptly produce the record; two, promptly respond that the record doesn't exist; three, promptly respond that the record requested is exempt from public disclosure; or four, promptly respond that the record requested is an active use or storage and will, and to set a date and time within seven calendar days from the date of the request of when it will be made available. So any four of these timeframes can be extended up to ten business days from the original date of the request in the event of unusual circumstances which are further defined by the law. Next slide, please. In conclusion, at its core, the Public Records Act confers upon the public the right to inspect or copy governmental records during customary business hours of its custodian, and it imposes upon the municipalities the legal obligation to promptly produce those records upon request. The law also imposes some other obligations which you should be aware of, including holding hearings on appeals of custodians' decisions, only charging those fees associated with copying or transmitting or creating a public record, not inspecting it. We got a Vermont Supreme Court decision that came out and said... "You can't charge for if someone just wants to inspect a public record." And not destroying or otherwise getting rid of public records except when specifically authorized to do so. Also, no keeping your records at your club in Mar-a-Largo or with your Corvette of your Wilmington, Delaware home. This is not following proper records storage protocol. Next slide, please. If you'd like to learn more about Vermont's Public Records Act, I again encourage you to visit our website resources page for more information. Here you'll find our Public Records Act frequently asked questions, which again are in your packet, a presentation from VASARA about complying with your public records management responsibilities, as well as our model public records policy, which includes both a model request and response form for your custodian to use in their daily interactions with people making public records requests. Just one quick word on VASARA. The Vermont State Archives and Records Administration, or VASARA for short, is charged by the Vermont Legislature with coming up with the general and specific retention schedules governing municipal records, working with local custodians seeking individual disposition orders. Those are the orders that the state comes out and says, "You can get rid of this record", and educating local officials on records management best practices. They have a very strong history of working one-on-one with municipalities to assist them with complying with their records management responsibilities. And they're really your go-to people for all questions about how to keep your records and for how long. So I've included them, their contact information in the slide if you have any questions regarding that. Next slide. With that, does anyone have any questions about the Public Records Act before we move on to our last section, which is going to be conflicts of interest?
Counselor Booton.
So mail that we receive, is that considered public records?
So definition is any information written, or which that is, that is produced or acquired in the course of agency business. So if that mail is concerning agency or city council business, then yes, it is a public record.
Right.
May I ask a more specific question, sir?
Sure.
We occasionally, we more than occasionally get mail from a gentleman named Marcus West. He also sends mail on a regular basis to the governor, to our sitting senators, to our representative, to members of Congress.
Attorney General, Governor.
Attorney, yeah.
Secretaries.
I don't.
Yeah, I get the idea.
They generally, mine come to my home.
Sure.
Most of them end up in Danville, at Joe's Pond, where we enjoy them in the evening.
With marshmallows?
No, I, no, not being tongue-in-cheek, I don't keep them.
Yeah, okay. It's still a public record.
I mean, the entire council is copied. Generally, the manager, is the manager always copied?
Yeah.
You always get them? Do you archive them as well?
I don't, yes.
Okay, so everyone's receiving them. It's not just you receiving them.
Correct.
Okay. So long as, so there was.
No, on occasion, there were, there were some choice letters that were directed specifically at me.
Sure, okay.
And James Douglas.
If you're receiving a communication directly to you concerning agency business, it's something that I would provide to Carol as the custodian of all city records. So congratulations. That way, the request doesn't have to be processed by you.
Understood.
If it's something that you know everyone has received a copy of, check with VASARA regarding that. I believe they have a disposition order regarding duplicate records that allow for their immediate disposition, but don't take my word for that. Check with them on that. It is, okay. However, there was a case, which was the case of Peace versus, I think it was Wes Windsor, which concerned a public records request that was made onto a development review board. And also, so in that case, the zoning administrator responded. And that's where the court actually came up with the definition of what a custodian of public records is. And this, the requister was provided with all the records, but they also said, "Well, I want them also individually from each member" because they were provided with them as well. And the Supreme Court said, "No, you've got the, you've got the records you requested, and that's all that matters." So in that instance, the custodian, the ZA acted as custodian of the board and provided the records that were requested. So individual members didn't also have to respond. So in a situation where everyone has received communications, Carol will have a copy as a public record in order to respond to, in case anyone requested individually of you knowing that has been sent to you.
So before we start inundating Carol with mail, does it matter that the, that the mail? Generally, the mail, the letters, I would say the majority of the letters are addressed to someone else. They're addressed to the governor, they're addressed to the attorney general, they're addressed to representatives.
But they're CCing you perhaps?
Well, not even CC'd on the letter, just mailed a copy. So we are not specifically identified in the correspondence, but a copy finds its way to our homes.
Conservatively, and I'd hate to do this to you, Carol.
Give them to Carol.
I'm receiving, the reason why they're sending, I would ask this question, why are they sending it to me? And they're sending it to me because you're a city councillor, I would assume. So in that instance, I'm going to treat it as something that I've acquired in the course of agency business due to my status as a city councillor and give it to the custodian in case there is a request of that record. Also, it keeps it out of my possession. I know when there is a public records request that's made, which this was the subject of another Supreme Court case, if the custodian knows that, or if there is a chance that a public record may be kept by someone who's not the custodian, then the custodian has to reach out to everyone and ask, "Do you have this record?" And if so, you need to make it available. Okay? So that's the great advantage of your charter in terms of having one designated custodian, because a lot of municipalities frankly don't have that and it can be a little difficult replying to requests in a timely fashion when that's not the case.
What's the penalties for violation? And then another question is about, because we all have official Facebook pages and one of the easiest things to do is click on it and click delete. Is that not appropriate?
I would again check with VASARA on retention of electronic records. Is, are these personal accounts or is it a city account?
No, I know personal accounts don't apply unless it's city business. But I'm talking about, because we all have political pages. One that's really good at this, just as a side note, is Teddy. He never deletes anything. Not even.
Say what you want, I've once realized.
It's true. It's very true. To be commended for that. But, you know, there, that's the question is, you know, what are we allowed to delete stuff?
Sure, and again, disposition of any record, check with VASARA. I will tell you that the standard is a person who willfully, so intentionally destroys, gives away, sells, discards, or damages a public record without having authority to do so can be fined at least fifty dollars, but not more than a thousand dollars for each offense. That's, that's the penalty.
And there, there are GRS and SRS is specific to correspondence. And it would be worth reviewing those to see what the retention schedule is for.
Absolutely. There are, VASARA tries, does attempt to come up with categorical. They basically come up with categories based upon the content of public records in terms of establishing the disposition orders. But they do get very specific as well. And that's why I would always defer to them when it comes to, can I delete this? Can I get rid of this?
And I've got a, I'm on their advisory committee. So I've, I've got some good contacts. If somebody's got a specific question or a specific document, I can send it off to them.
Right, all right, we'll move on to the last topic, the last leg of Vermont's local three-legged transparency stool, which is conflicts of interest. So, next slide, please. What do we mean when we refer to conflicts of interest? Conceptually, conflicts of those occasions when your private interests or interests of those who are close to you are or appear to be at odds with the public duty that you owe your office, the city, and the people you serve. This creates a tension between your public and private lives that has the potential to impede your ability to exercise impartial judgment when making decisions. According to Chapter One, Article Seven of Vermont's Constitution, "Government exists for the benefit of the people, not for the advantage of any one individual." So your first loyalty therefore as a public official is to the people you serve. Next slide, please. Now, the city council has broad powers and conflicts of interest can infect all three branches of local government, executive, judicial, and legislative that it serves. However, whether something's a conflict of interest in one may not necessarily be a conflict of interest in another. So for instance, there exists this misperception I've come across in the past couple of years that local legislative bodies such as yourselves must be impartial in all matters that come before you, and that's simply just not the case. In fact, I dare say that most of you were elected on the basis of your political views. You don't lose your First Amendment right to free speech once you're elected to office. As politicians, which as elected officials you all are, you're allowed to take positions on issues that are big or small, mundane or controversial. Publicly taking a position on an issue won't disqualify you from acting in an executive, by which I mean administrative, or legislative, by which I mean rulemaking capacity, so long as doing so doesn't confer upon you some unique benefit not afforded the rest of the general public, such as the case with the establishment of a tax rate. Bias, which is a preference or inclination that inhibits impartial judgment, typically only becomes a disqualifying factor when a legislative body such as a city council acts in a quasi-judicial capacity. These again are those instances where you're acting like a court presiding over road reclassifications or border health hearings. Bias may disqualify you from these proceedings because the Vermont Supreme Court has ruled that people have the right to a full, fair, and impartial hearing before a tribunal that entertain no bias against them. Managing bias and the appearance of bias in the quasi-judicial contexts are important not only to protect parties' constitutional rights, but also to preserve the public's confidence in the impartial administration of city business. Context is therefore is very important when it comes to assessing conflicts of interest is something you'll always need to be aware of. Next slide. In recognition of the risks that conflicts of interest pose, the legislature in 2017 enacted Act Seventy-Nine, which required every municipality in the state to adopt conflict of interest prohibitions by July first, 2019. And at a minimum, those prohibitions had to include a definition of what a conflict of interest is, a list of elected and appointed officials that it would apply to, a method for determining whether a conflict of interest exists, actions that have to be taken if one is found to exist, and a method of enforcement against violators. So today, every municipality in the state must now have a conflict of interest prohibition in place containing those five basic elements. Next slide. In addition to what the state requires, Section Three-Eleven of your governance charter says that "No city official or employee shall be interested in any contract with the city, furnish any material, or perform any labor except in the discharge of the official's or employee's official duties or as allowed in the procurement policy or conflict of interest policy as adopted by the council." So I'm not sure when this prohibition was written, but it reflects the Vermont Supreme Court ruling in the case of Jackson versus Bergeron in 1919. This was a case in which Burlington officials, served as both alderman and street commissioner, entered into a contract with the city for some bridge and staircase repairs. And though you'll find nothing in Vermont law regarding this, except in your charter and maybe some other charters, that explicitly prohibits this type of direct financial conflict of interest, by which I mean one that exists when an official acts on a matter that provides themselves with a direct financial gain. It is one that will always be vulnerable to court challenge, so it's great that it appears in your charter. Next slide, please. When it comes to developing a conflict of interest policy, there's no simply one size fits all that will work for every municipality. Your city's conflict of interest policy should set its own unique shared expectations for how conflicts will be handled based on where exactly your community draws the line between what's allowed and what's not. Conflicts of interest in this sense live on a continuum. Different municipalities will have different definitions of what constitutes a conflict of interest, and this makes total sense. What may be a conflict in Barry City or Burlington isn't necessarily going to be a conflict in, say, Maidstone or Peru. That's to be expected as there tends to be a greater propensity for conflicts, or at least the appearance of them, in smaller communities where everyone knows your name and where people are more likely to wear more than one hat in town. Next slide. It's not enough however that your policy simply defines what a conflict of interest is. The law also requires your policy to include a method for determining whether a conflict of interest exists and if so, to prescribe what actions must be taken if it does. Our model policy can be boiled down into four easy-to-remember steps with respect to this approach. One, disclosing the conflict. Two, discussing the conflict. Three, having the conflicted member consider recusal. And four, recording the process and its resulting decision. One important note to make is that although recusal is the best remedy, it unfortunately has a very significant limitation and in that it is completely voluntary. It's a decision done entirely of one-own's volition. So whenever a conflict of interest is present or appears to be present, clearest course of action, as I said, is complete recusal from the matter under consideration. As the appearance of a conflict oftentimes can be just as damaging as the conflict itself. It's important to keep in mind that the public's confidence is the currency of your council and nothing will bankrupt you quicker than the presence or perception of a conflict. However, due to core needs, recusal may not always be feasible. In those instances, it's important to remember that just because a member has a conflict of interest doesn't necessarily mean that they can't continue to participate in the matter under consideration. Determining whether something is a conflict or not is just the first step in the process. What you're really trying to figure out is whether the member will be unable to act impartially despite the presence of the conflict. So the end goal here for, therefore, is not just to ascertain whether a conflict exists, but whether that conflict is a disqualifying conflict. And that's one of the main points I want to take away from this training, that even though you may not always be able to avoid conflicts of interest with proper policies and procedures in place, you should be able to effectively maintain them and in doing so lessen and possibly even eliminate their potential negative impacts. So I do hope you watch a longer training video on this topic in particular as it really does help tease these issues out. Next slide. And finally, the law also requires that your conflict of interest prohibition includes some method of enforcement against violators. Our model policy provides that if an offender is an appointed official, the legislative body may either admonish them in public or private, request or demand their recusal, or remove them from office. Now, your options are going to be a little more limited when it comes to elected officials as like you, they're accountable to only the voters. Consequently, unless your charter provides otherwise, and I didn't see that it does in my review of it, recalling or removing an elected official won't be a possibility. Instead, all you'll be able to do in that situation is to admonish the elected official in public or private, request their recusal, or to request their resignation. Next slide, please. If you don't currently have a prohibition in place or if you're considering updating yours, our model policy, which again is available on our website, satisfies the law's basic requirements. As I've mentioned, the first thing such a policy needs is a definition. In our experience, the biggest issue municipalities have with conflicts of interest is first being able to identify them. It's hard to deal with the conflict of interest if you can't all agree on what one is in the first place. We include a definition of it in our model policy, but it's really best to think of it as just a jumping-off point for a broader discussion about what is and what's not appropriate behavior in your community and how to address it. The best conflict of interest policy is really going to be the one that best reflects Barry City's own values. And, next slide, please. That's conflicts of interest in a nutshell. As with the open meeting law and public records act, you can also find additional information about this topic on our website's resources page. And I've also included in your packet our model conflicts of interest policy as well as our incompatible offices chart. Anyone have any questions about conflicts of interest? Before we conclude, I just want to, or turn it over to questions on any of these topics, I just want to again let you know that the Municipal Citizens Center is here for. I just want to again let you know that the Municipal Assistance Center is here for any questions you have, so please reach out to us if you have any questions. You may have received an email or two, three or four about our new website. The Municipal Access Portal, or MAP for short, is our new member portal for accessing information and resources on our website, as well as submitting legal inquiries to the Municipal Assistance Center attorneys. So going forward, we're going to be responding to your inquiries through your MAP account rather than through email. So please log in to vlct.org/ login for more information or for help with either creating your account or logging into it. Once you're all set up, you'll be able to hit the various Ask a Legal Question buttons that's located on the website in order to get in touch with us. Or as always, you can always reach us the old fashioned way by giving us a call at 802-229-9111 between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4 o'clock p.m., Monday through Friday. Now happy to field any questions you have on any of the three topics we just went over.
I'm pulling the presentation.
I just want to start Garrett by saying thank you. I want to start by saying thank you, Garrett, for this presentation. I always find these trainings by VLCT really helpful, as I've seen them over the years, particularly as the laws adapt, and particularly trainings that you offer are very succinct and thorough, and it's such a resource for us as a municipality. And also to just have this common platform and grounding, because we all work within an organizational culture, and having this common understanding, I think, helps us hold each other accountable and work through tough issues as they come up. So thank you so much, Garrett.
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor, for having me here, and I hope you recover quickly.
And Councilor Lozan had a question.
Well, just circling back to the portal, I did sign up, but they still respond by email. Is there a point in time where you'll be asked to respond specifically through the portal and not by email? Just so I can mark that on my calendar.
Yeah, it's a little, we've found, we've gotten feedback that's a little confusing, and we are working to make it more user friendly. When you get a request, you get notified that a communication has been sent to you. You are able to click on it, and that'll take you to the, what's called an action item screen. And there, if you scroll down, you'll see a slot for messages. And if the action item is still open, you can open a new message and communicate that way. So that's what, and we've also, because it's a new tool for us to use, we're getting used to using it as well, so we're leaving those action items open for a couple of days so that we can use it as a portal to have communications with you, rather than you having to submit a new request every time.
I see. But for now, I can continue to use both.
I would say use the portal, but if you don't hear for us or are having difficulty, certainly reach out to us.
No worries.
We don't want to make it difficult for you.
It's not hard to use.
Or to create barriers in terms of communicating with us.
Thank you.
Councilor Boon.
So is it your recommendation that we have our address on the website, this location, for incoming mail?
Yes, I would recommend that you have, if you don't already, individual mailboxes, and have correspondence sent to this address, and then they can be put in your mailbox.
I'll just put it on my stack. I believe that the correspondence retention schedule is going to let us get rid of...
I would suspect so.
Stuff, you know, maybe keep it a year, but I, my guess is, because most of this really doesn't have anything to do with city business.
Right.
What are you referring to?
The Marcus West.
Oh.
The pile of diatribes.
Well, just apologize in advance, Carol.
Hey, have you seen my office? It'll just get lost.
Mr. Manager, we're going to need a bigger city hall.
We actually may want to discuss whether or not having mail imaged. I don't know what kind of a problem that would be.
For archiving purposes, I mean, as Garrett mentioned, you know, regardless of format, it's still a public record.
Yeah. Yeah, what's really helpful in light of Vermont Supreme Court decisions is to communicate regarding city business through the use of a city email, if you have one, almost exclusively, and for correspondence to be sent to the city. That way, you always know where the records are when someone requests them. Otherwise, you're searching through your email history, and I know from mine, that can be, when I'm looking for something, it can be a little difficult.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Good evening. All right, that looks like it takes us to a first reading, warrant for eight o'clock p.m., so we have, after the warrant time, for ordinance number 202301, a community investment ordinance presented to council, Councilor Wazak. Councilor Wazak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, council has in front of them a memo and a draft of the community investment ordinance, and this is laid out in the memo, but just for popular consumption, I'll give a brief history lesson. I actually started working on this back in early 2020, but then COVID happened, and that, it is now 2023. But the timing ended up working out pretty well, because now with ARPA and the Infrastructure and Jobs Investment Act, I believe it's called, the city is going to be completing some very large scale infrastructure and capital projects over the next couple of years. And so what I've done is I've worked with the city manager, city staff, unions representing city workers about how to ensure that these large scale expensive projects, you know, meet the standards that we want to meet as an employer, as a 21st century workplace, making sure that folks are getting compensated fairly, making sure that they're getting their benefits, and really just making sure that, you know, if the city is handing out over $200,000, which is the threshold of this ordinance, you know, that that money is being well spent, that employees are getting paid well, and that the folks who are, the folks who are doing the work, who are building the infrastructure that we need to keep the city running are getting paid well and getting properly reimbursed. So, you know, I keep coming back to the first conversation that the manager and I had about this, and this, it's gone through a few drafts now, but I said, you know, what do you think about the idea? The manager said, you know, these are things that a good employer should be doing anyway. And that's really how I feel about where we've landed here. So, yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to open it up to other questions. I know we have a gentleman here who wanted to speak about his experience here in Barry, so I think that it would probably be best to start there, and we'll go from there. You can come right up here.
And if you could state your name for the record.
Yes, sir. Hi, my name is Walter Smith. And I'm a union carpenter. And I've been living in Barry for 21 years now. I've been in the trades for, since 1970, 1980. I was an independent contractor for most of the years. And I've been in the union, I had a chance to join the union up here, and I've been in for 18 years. And the reason I joined the union is because I never had benefits or health benefits or anything like that. And it's a whole different world when you have benefits to deal, to live with, you know? Going union makes it, they have their benefits and stuff, where ordinance like that, this, makes it we're not just union people, but all tradespeople have benefits and health insurance, which is a big thing nowadays. You've got to have health insurance to survive in this world. You know, benefits, a decent wage, a good wage to work. You know, I've been in the union for 18 years, and out of them 18 years, I've spent probably 12 or 13 years not working in Vermont. I've worked states, Maine, New Hampshire, New York, Massachusetts, just to be able to keep my benefits, just to be able to keep my health benefits and whatnot, because nobody really offers health benefits to tradespeople. I mean, that's, I would love to be staying here in Vermont. There's, all those times I've gone, I'm either gone five or six days a week. So what do I do? One, how am I being a part of this community, investing in this community by working out of state, spending my money out of state? I'd love nothing better than to work right here in Barry and be able to have health benefits and spend my money in Barry. Yeah, I still spend money in Barry because I have family here, have kids that go to school here, grandkids. But most of the time, I'm gone. Like I said, five days, I leave Sunday night to go to work and come back Friday night. Sometimes, sometimes jobs require me to work six days a week. So is that giving me a day of working in here just to be able to keep my health benefits? You know, the ordinance like this, the jobs are, I feel, are more quality jobs. You have skilled profession, skilled tradespeople on these jobs. Not saying that people aren't skilled, but I think you have better skilled people because they're offered benefits. You know, you go to work and you know you're going to work for that reason, you know, so you want to go to work for that job. You want to be part of that job because you, you know, they're offering you benefits and to survive with. And so you're going to give your, you're going to give your best skilled work you can. You know, 18 years, unfortunately, I've had to spend 12 years away from my family and Vermont and whatnot, but it's what I had to do to be able to keep my health, my benefits. You know, it's worked, not, I mean, it's worked, and I've been able to keep health, and I've had health benefits, which I never had as an independent contractor, and I get some, you can't, it's an expensive thing. And with ordinance like this, you get benefits, you know, you get a decent wage, you get a good wage, you know, you have, I feel like you have a safer job site, you have a safer workplace, you know, there's a lot of people that probably do leave state to work to further benefit part of it. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit on the, because I don't know y'all, so, I mean, I've dealt with the union, I'm on boards and stuff, you know, but I know the people, so I'm a little bit on the nervous side of things, but this is just, I watched some of these big projects go down years ago, and I drive right by them, headed out of state to go to work, you know, and it bothers you for a while, then you get into the mode, well, I'm going to work, you know, this is what I have to do to live. You know, it's, it's just too bad. These things really should be part of big projects, commercial jobs, stuff like that, they really should be. I mean, it's very important to have benefits, you know, how do you attract good work, good work people, good work ethics, you know, people, yeah, all right, so, yeah, you're going to get benefits, so that's going to bring good people to the, to the community. You know, what, it's just really hurt, you know, if you want to support your community, but how can I support my community in not being gone? I mean, I'm a firm believer of this ordinance, and I think it's a really good thing.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Smith, for your comments. Do you have any last words?
Anything else you wanted to add?
No, no, basically, that's, that's pretty the gist of it. I mean, that's just how it's been for me, and, no, I, I'm pretty much, it's just, you have to attract especially the younger generation of tradespeople, not, and I feel like you're forcing them out by not offering benefits to tradespeople. I mean, you just do, you force them to go other states to work, you know? I just, I want to thank you for allowing me to come here. I had hoped to be able to speak a little bit more on the better side of things, but the gist of it is, it's, if you chase out all, especially the younger generation, where are you going to be at? You know, you're going to be having out of state people come to work here, or wouldn't you rather keep local people working, keep them satisfied with benefits, you know, and a lot of people is, if they got benefits, they're going to want to stay here and work. They're going to feel safer, you know, it's a safer job all the way around. It really is, because there's rules and regs on stuff like that. It's a safer job site, you know? That's pretty much the bottom line of it.
Mr. Smith, you make an excellent point, that I hadn't really thought about, how important it is to have good jobs here for people who are tradespeople so that we keep them in our community. Thank you for pointing that out.
Well, it's true. I mean, how much time have I spent here in 18 years to support my community by being on the road? There's times I'd be gone two or three weeks at a time, you know? It's, I've made it work, and that's what I needed to do. But would I love to come work here in Barry? Absolutely. You know, it's just, it's a big thing, is the health, it's all the benefits to a lot of people now. And I really do feel like you chase, you don't chase, maybe, do you get them to leave the state of Vermont? Probably some, but the biggest thing is, a lot of them have to go to New York, Maine, Massachusetts, New Hampshire to work. If, and so you have to do it, you have to do what you have to do to survive in life. You know, you know what it is, you go to the hospital and pay it out of pocket, you're not happening. With health benefits, you know, you can take care of yourself.
Mr. Smith, I really appreciate you sharing your lived experiences, a union worker and having to work out of state, and I think, I think you've made some great points. I see two other hands raised, just to allow some other people time to speak, starting with Matt and then Amy Gelford.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe we met at the Let's Grow Kids Chamber of Commerce event a few months ago.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah.
So I appreciate you giving me a little bit of time. You know, I'm here in the capacity of my role at the Associated General Contractors of Vermont, but as you know, I'm the past chair of the Central Vermont Chamber, so I may make some comments relevant to that. So I appreciate everything, and also the last speaker, I really appreciate the sentiment and the tone of what you had to offer, and I'm conscious of that fact, and hopefully I have some options for you by the end of the time that I have here. So we, I was, I'm not a resident of Barry, I'm also no longer the chair of the Central Vermont Chamber, but I've been contacted at AGC by several members of your community, and even one of the council persons on your board about this bill to get a position of where we are coming from as the contractor community on how this ordinance would affect us and what that means to the community of Barry. So the, this is really what they call a responsible contractor ordinance, I think that the name may be slightly incorrect on the ordinance, but most cities and towns that we've dealt with, that's the phrase that's used, and it's a movement that's... But most cities and towns that we've dealt with, that's the, the phrase that's used and it's a, it's a movement that's gone on. And the, the, the goal of the movement is to create certain requirements and employer mandates within city ordinances or town ordinances beyond what the state already requires. And I think your ordinance as written really does reflect the state's requirements through the Vermont prevailing wage. So, so we understand what, what the purpose is of, of the proposal and, and how it affects the, the community that you work in. So I would just share a couple of things that, and we, we are not taking a, a position against or for, I think, over the next reading or so, you may have some changes, thoughts or, or differences. But I think really what the first thing that I would address is, is number one, in terms of the unrepresented communities, we can't possibly get more supportive of that. I mean, we want to, we want to have our doors open. We do the very best that we can. The Associated General Contractors of Vermont, as well as America, put together a program last year where we created grants to provide harnesses for, for women in construction. So that women were able to come in and feel comfortable in these roles and, and work with us because you know what? Sometimes the, the male counterpart of that piece of equipment wouldn't work for people and they didn't feel comfortable. So we created different programs of like that. If you would visit vermontconstructionjobs.com, again, I'll say that slowly, vermontconstructionjobs.com, you'll see that within our website, what we've done and, and, and worked towards for our members is creating a platform that people of, from all different walks of life can come to, see what the different jobs are that are available in our community, see what the average pay rates are based on the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, which is largely where we come up with a lot of our, our prevailing wage statutes. And they can actually see people that look like them doing the jobs, which we're very proud of. So we're, we're actually very supportive of, of that element of, of the process. The other side of it, you have a, interrupt me anytime, I, I, I work in Montpelier as a lobbyist for the organization. And I think I represent, I, I recognized one member of the council from the, the hallways up there, Council Wazarak.
Well, good effort, that was a good effort, that was a good effort.
My apologies, I'm doing the best I can. So we look at the other side with the prevailing wage and, and, you know, I'm, I'm happy to stand here and say that in general, the members that we represent, which are around 200 general contractors and electricians through the state, we're not worried about that. I mean, that's not a real big impact to what our members are doing. What it will impact is some of the smaller companies that are out there that are bidding on the sub $1 million jobs. So you have to recognize in your budgets going forward that by adding the prevailing wage statute, not only are you raising some of those wages, which arguably are being paid due to the fact of mere competition in a market that we can't find help. So let me be clear, we are out there begging people, paying bonuses, going well above the livable wage in almost every situation to attract people to our industry. By statute, you're also adding a 40% fringe benefit to that. So keep in mind, $200,000 isn't a big job today. So we're just cautioning that you pay attention to that. Possibly the finance committee might want to consider that piece of this policy before you move forward. We're, we're happy with the policy as it lays. There's, there's nothing that my members who are generally large contractors are going to be impacted with. But again, it becomes that supply of different contractors that exist in the area. People that have been contacting me and my association from small towns to large cities are dealing with the impact of a lack of bidding that's coming in on contracts. In fact, we've seen a large bridge project in the multimillion dollar category and Queachy get pulled in. We saw the Champlain Parkway project come in at over 140, 140% of what the original engineers' estimates were. We saw the basement of the Cherry Street Garage in Burlington, Vermont, come in at over $5 million, over the $8 million estimate because there were no other bidders that were there. So I just want to caution this council as we move forward, the, the provisions that we have today in the responsible contractor policy are innocuous. It's not a big deal. But as you move forward, this will grow as we've seen in other cities and towns and make it less attractive for the limited contractors that you have in your community to bid on projects. So we, we, we generally don't disapprove to most of the language. But be aware that the more regulations that you put on business, the other 200 plus towns that exist in Vermont that have the same ARPA money will be your competitors for contractors.
Thank you for those comments. Next up by Amy Gelford.
Hi, so I work for the state government and I work in one of the infrastructure financing programs. I'm not speaking as a role of my state job. It's just when I saw this item on the city council agenda, it caught my attention because I am familiar with some of what goes on there. I'm not a lawyer or an engineer or an accountant, but I work with a lot of them. So this isn't my area of specific work, but I'm just kind of aware of it as an issue with federal funding. So I'm, I'm wearing my, my Berry City homeowner hat, but just know a little too much about some of this. So I felt like I needed to comment. So the, two of the federal programs that are mentioned in the, in the cover memo are ARPA funding, which comes through, you know, directly to the towns generally. And I think there's a lot of flexibility about that. I'm not as familiar with that, so I won't speak much to that. As far as the federal infrastructure money, you know, that came from a specific federal act, but it tends to come down through existing federal funding channels or slight changes to them. So that's where the auditorium is getting funding that's coming through USDA Rural Development. The water earmark is actually coming through funding that is otherwise goes into the drinking water state revolving fund that I work in. So they kind of follow similar paths and they go through specific federal agencies and specific state agencies. So like in the case of drinking water that I work in, it's money that Congress sends to EPA and then it goes through, in some cases, regional offices for the earmarks or it goes through states for the programs that I work in. So that's just kind of where I'm coming from. Federal funding can be great, but it comes with a lot of strings attached. And I didn't see any references in the, the charter, the ordinance itself to federal requirements and how this would interplay with federal requirements. So I think there's a lot of overlap and so you just might want to do some additional review. Maybe with Vermont League of Cities and Towns has some resources, the state building a general services website has some good resources about federal contracting and some of the particular quirks with that. Just to make sure you're not setting up something that's going to be a headache later, either for your contractors or for, for picking bids or that sort of thing and just so nobody's confused about the requirements. There's a lot of federal requirements that are, that are stricted. If you're going to take a dollar of federal money on a project, no matter what else you're putting together with it, you've got to meet the federal requirements, you want to watch out for those. There are a lot of federal requirements related to prevailing wages. There's the Federal Davis Bacon Act and there's certain documentation that if you're getting federal funding, you have to follow certain procedures. So I think you just want to make sure whatever's in the city charter is going to match. You know, given that we know we have a couple of big infrastructure projects going on, just that, that the language is going to, going to mesh well. And I think like, you know, earlier you're talking about the water earmark and, and talking to EPA Region One, that sort of thing. Whenever you're talking to USDA Rural Development, you know, other agencies, they will, they can give you lots of advice on the specific programs for those. But I think it would be worth asking upfront. And there's also requirements for bidding and contracting about how federal projects are advertised. And in particular, there are requirements about them being advertised to disadvantaged communities, minority communities, women owned businesses and small businesses. I don't think there's a reference to small businesses in the, in the charter language. And I think that might be something to think about, if, if that's something you want to give an advantage to. One other thing with some federal money, you know, the federal regulations are going to be from the perspective of federal taxpayers, which may be different than this is trying to represent the perspective of what we want as Berry taxpayers and what we value for our local contractors. And there may be some places where it's tough to get those to align. And an example of that would be, there's a lot of things the federal requirements are going to be strict about. But once you've met those federal requirements, there's some limitations on what options the city might have beyond that. So let's say you put a contract out to bid, you follow all the federal rules and you get a range of, of prices. And you want to go with the Berry City contractor, but they're a little more expensive. But we think, hey, well, we want to keep the money local, we want to hire them locally. Some of the federal programs will not cover the difference. If you have set multiple qualified bids, they're going to pay for the lower bidder and you may be able to contract with the higher bidder, but you might have to pay the difference. That might be something the city is willing to invest in because it's worth it. But we can't, I, I think because it's federal money, we can't necessarily compel people in other Vermont towns and other states to pay extra just to hire Berry City contractors, if that makes sense. So I think that's just something to watch out for is what are we looking at with these big federal dollars? And how will that work with, with our options in this? Another thing is there's some language in there about waivers and discretion to have waiving some of the requirements. And I would watch out for federal and state requirements where you cannot waive that or it can't be waived on a local level. You actually have to apply for a waiver from a federal agency and have a record that, that they said that. Sometimes there's waivers for small dollar amount projects, they don't have to meet every federal requirement. But I think you can't just assume my project is cheap enough that I don't need the waiver. You actually have to have the approval for the waiver. So again, I think the spirit of the federal contracting stuff is very much, can work with this, but I would just watch the language carefully so it doesn't trip up anything for the city or contractors down the road.
Thank you for your shared experience on that, Amy. Counselor Wazak or Manager Shirley Castro, did you have any additional explanations you wanted to offer in light of this testimony?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, well, a couple of things. So first of all, just to, to recap, what this ordinance requires is that when the city directly contracts for a project of $200,000 or more, that project has to pay prevailing wages, offer healthcare, properly classify their workforce and include that incentive for hiring Berry City residents, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that it goes without, I defer to the manager on the intricacies of dealing with federal dollars. But you know, it goes without saying that if we're going to accept federal money, it has to be accepted and spent within the scope of what the federal government is giving it to us for. And just on a basic federalism standpoint, that trumps any local ordinance anyway. And, and then for the, the waiver part of it, part of this ordinance, which is section 24-2, section C, subsections one through five, or excuse me, one through four. Basically what those waivers do is it just gives the city an out. So you know, we heard a comment earlier about like, well, if only one, we bid a big project, we only get one bid and they can't meet the standards of this ordinance, well, then the manager gets to waive some of the standards so that we can get the important work of the city done. So, so it gives the city an out to be able to control for those costs and to be able to not get stuck between a rock or a hard place where we feel like we either have to compromise what we believe in or get an important project done. The way this is written, we can do both. So I would, do you have anything else to add just for federal money or?
Counselor Wazak covered really what I was going to speak to and I, I think, Amy, thank you so much for your comments. I think really important to have that at the forefront. I, I, I was thinking, as I was thinking about what you were saying, I was thinking about the waiver under section C, loss of available funding, which I think maybe in a second reading, maybe we can sort of explain what that means in terms of federal funding, state funding. But I, I think we were thinking about that, but I think this was a good reminder that maybe we need to be more clear about that part of it. But I think the intent is, as Counselor Wazak said, is that the, the federal rules would obviously supersede here. Fortunately, I think that this would be consistent with many of those federal rules anyhow. But I think, thank you for those comments. I think it was helpful to realize where we might need to do a little word spinning.
Yeah, and I just want to also just add that in reference to ARPA and the Federal Infrastructure Act, I just use those in the memo as examples of two federal programs that are giving us money that we're going to spend on infrastructure. It could come up with any other acronym during the next infrastructure bill. Mr. Mayor, how would you like me having some hands from the public and council? So just give me some guidance on how you do it.
Yeah, you want to air traffic control the room?
Sure, okay. So I saw Mr. Toburg and, sorry, Mr. Smith, you can.
Thank you very much.
So I saw Mr. Toburg and then Counselor Lozon and then Counselor Stockwell.
Thank you, Teddy. And I will not try to pronounce your last name, so.
You should know.
I should know Wazak, but. I, I would just like to remind people that the more regulations you put on businesses, the more you're going to price small businesses out of the market. And the more your large businesses, your big businesses are able to absorb those costs that the small businesses will not. The other thing is when, when you're looking at prevailing wage, there are different definitions of prevailing wage when we look at statutes, for instance, for unemployment, prevailing wage would be the wage, the prevailing wage is the wage based on your experience. So that someone with no experience, the prevailing wage would be much lower than someone with, say, 30 years of experience. And so when you're saying that companies have to pay the prevailing wage, are you looking at the prevailing federal wage? Are you looking at the prevailing wage locally? Are you looking at the prevailing wage based on the experience that you have? And again, that's something that your large businesses are probably going to be able to absorb the costs of, of that and of understanding what it is than your small companies. And so I think that that's something that you really want to look at before you pass a regulation. The other thing is that if you're only getting one bid and you're deciding that you will waive some of the things because they say they cannot meet it, well, maybe if the other companies would have bid on the project if they knew that potentially things could be waived. So that's something that you also want to consider in determining whether to approve this, this measure or not. Thank you.
Thank you. And just before Counselor Lozon goes, just to answer your question, we're using the term prevailing wage in the actual written language. It's the payment of a responsible wage in regards to the Vermont Capital Construction Act in the northern area, which is the Vermont statute that governs prevailing wages for construction projects.
Oh, thanks. First of all, a question for the manager. Are we, when will we next be bidding work in excess of $200,000, give or take?
It could happen within the next three to six months, I would imagine. I mean, the paving contract is done. Suspect the next work of that nature will come with one of the treatment plans.
It wasn't a trick question, I swear. It was just the immediacy of this. I, I spoke with Counselor Wazak, see how easy it is? Wazak. Just before the meeting and I said, would you be terribly upset if I wanted a few weeks to think about this before we bring it to first reading? You know, and the reason being, I, I did want to, you know, thank God the weather was a little rainy on Sunday or I wouldn't have gotten as far as I did because I did want to kind of reconcile this with Davis Bacon, which is, you know, the federal requirements that we pretty much refer back to. I didn't really get a chance to, but you know, some of the questions I had, and I'm just going to go through them really quickly. You know, where we talk about the definition of minority group members, while that's generally widely accepted, it's not universal, you know, depending on where you go. Some, some, some citations refer to Asians, some refer to Asian specific or Asian Indian. And so there's different definitions. So I wonder if we couldn't just standardize that. So at some point in the future, if this ordinance does pass, we're not, you know, we're not having to change, future councils aren't having to change the definition or the widely held definition of minority on a regular basis. You know, where you talked under, you referenced 24-2C, where you talked about, you know, the language that says maybe waived under extraordinary circumstances. I don't think you need extraordinary circumstances because you just described them. You just listed the five. So, you know, so again, is that substantive or not? I'm, I'm not going to run. And then the, you know, one of the things I would like under E, decision by the city manager, if the city manager decides that, look, it's just not practical or wise for the city to be enforcing this ordinance at this time, it takes a two thirds vote of the council to override him or her.
Support.
You're welcome. Well, look, I mean, we, we are a different, diverse council and we often find ourselves on, you know, with a five, two, four, three vote, it's not unusual. And I think we have to give, you know, we have to trust our city manager enough to, you know, throw him a little bone. Where you talked about workers' compensation, this, the only reason this strikes me, Counselor, is because Uh, where you talked about uh workers' compensation, this, the only reason this strikes me, Counselor, is because uh we've gone from tax season to workers' compensation audit season. So now we're representing a lot of clients in audits. And generally speaking, the way workers' compensation works under Vermont statute is if uh if a subcontractor does not have their own workers' compensation insurance, the insurer will make the person who is contracting with that subcontractor carry specific insurance on them. So there was just some things in here, and I don't want to, I don't want to go on and on. Overall, you've done a good job.
Just on that worker, I just want to nail down on that workers' comp thing. So are you are just?
I you could strike it because state statute is going to govern, it's going to trump city ordinance in terms of, you know, who is carrying workers' comp. And in the state of Vermont, if you are engaging a subcontractor and that subcontractor does not have workers' comp insurance, your workers' comp carrier will force you. They'll say, how much are you paying this person? You know, 75 grand and they adjust their wages accordingly and say, look, they're covered if they don't have their own policy. So um, yeah, and then, you know, just some of the things where you talked about uh in a manner prescribed by the city. Um, I just, I that made me scratch my head a little bit like, okay, well, you know, what it, what is that? And then under 24-5, probably some of the most substantive stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, y- you talked about that the contractor has to maintain complete and appropriate daily entries of employees on site. Well, not all employees when they do work for the city are on site. We have a lot of engineers that might be sitting in an office, you know, 45 miles away drawing up plans and they never, they may see the site, you know, once every two weeks for for a site inspection. So just that language and then where you said um y- you've got a day, you've got to mark the time of each entry or exit. I I don't think that's, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. I don't think that's really what you meant. Because um, you know, often, for example, an employee gets uh, their number gets pulled for a DOT drug test. And their employer says, okay, you know, 10 o'clock, you got to run up to Berlin and, you know, do your urine test. Well, that employee doesn't log out. The employer pays them. So generally, if they were to leave the job site, so I I just think you need some tightening up where I I get what you were getting at. You want some sort of proof. You want payroll records. So if we want to check who was working at the site, it would be easy for the city to say, look, we want to see your your payroll records, your time cards. We want you to show us some sort of proof that who was on, who was working on that particular project at any given point in time. And so it's more a payroll records thing. And then D under 24-5D, where you say you got to provide proof that you're not disbarred. Um, that's in every contract that I've ever seen. There's always, always that language in there that says, you know, you've got to certify that you got proper insurance, you have the right credentials, you're not disbarred from um, you know. So it was just different things like that. I I get where you're going with it. I I don't, I don't hate it. Let's put it that.
When I was lining this up.
But I just think that.
If I could jump in and ask Counselor, um, Counselor Wazak is the sponsor, um, how he would like to take up those uh perspective amendments.
Yeah, um, sure. So first, I just want to defer to the manager when it comes to manner prescribed by the city language. Uh, because the manager and I actually tossed that same language back and forth, trying to find somewhere that made sense, and that's where we landed.
Yeah, this was um an effort to to give the city flexibility in how it requests the records. One of the things that, you know, do we request it electronically? Do we request it in paper and pencil, you know, pen and paper? Um, so uh th- this was really an effort just to give us flexibility to create a an easy reporting mechanism. One of the things we tried to do as we went through these drafts was to not create onerous requirements. And so form and manner was really to get at that that flexibility for for how we collect information.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm good. Yeah.
Um, the two-thirds vote to override the manager, that's fine by me. Um, I was, you talked about throwing a bone to the manager. I was trying to throw a bone to the my more conservative colleagues. Um, striking extraordinary circumstances, I don't think that that should be fine because you're right, it's all written down there anyway, and we have to add the ors after those anyway. Um, you didn't bring this up, Counselor Lozon, but under the incentive, um, city residents, women, minority group members also, um, I'd had a request to add veterans, which I'd be more than happy to add that. Uh, further define, I heard the manager say further defining the loss of available funding to address that federal question, which I think that is perfectly reasonable. Um, I have to do, I trust you, I just want to do more research into the workers' comp thing, just to make sure we're not losing anything that's striking that line.
Yeah, I get it.
Um.
And and on those two items, where there's standard contract language, what's the harm in in keeping it in the uh ordinance if it's totally standard and and routine?
Right. And that that's the other thing I think too, that's important to keep in mind, is that most of the stuff in here will be worked into the RFPs for the work that is going to be done. Um, so that sets that ex- and the, you know, waiver, et cetera, et cetera, that will be included in RFPs to address the question of, well, what if someone didn't know that they could, you know, send in the bid anyway? So that all sounds okay to me. I think that that addresses most.
Yeah, there was just one other one. I missed it because it was the last page.
Sure, sure.
Where you talk about remedies if a contractor fails to comply with the provisions.
Yep.
Well, if the city has given them a 2% advantage on the bid, couldn't we also get our 2% back?
Yes, and that is in.
Did I miss it?
Yeah, yeah, it's in here somewhere. It's in there. Yeah. It is in here. I don't remember.
I saw it, but I didn't see it under remedies.
It says that the city, if they can't maintain.
24-4.
Thank you.
B.
24-4B. Oh, yeah, the stuff that's highlighted right on my screen.
Thank you.
The city shall be authorized to seek a 2% reduction off the total bid, which is be included in the RFP, et cetera.
Gotcha.
Counselor Stockwell, you are.
Thank you for doing this, Counselor Wazak. This is a great step forward, I think. And I just add people with disabilities to 24-1D and 24-4A.
Or?
24-4A.
Yep.
24-1D.
All right. Um, and I do just want to, just to be transparent with the council, I was, I brought this as a first hearing, hoping we could go right to second reading, but we're clearly going to need to do some work. So we'll come back for another, I think, first reading.
We don't have to do that anymore. Are, we had been sort of misinterpreting the the way the the language is laid out for, we can move to a second reading and we can do as many second readings as we need to get to approval.
Okay, so acknowledging then that I will take what has been heard tonight and I'll work with the manager to either tighten up some language or change or whatever we need to do. And I would ask for passage of, for a motion for passage to second reading.
So move second.
There's a motion and a second to advance the ordinance to a second reading um with the with the changes discussed. And and Carol, do you feel like you have a solid handle for the minutes on what those changes are or Teddy?
No, but he does.
Okay, all right. So, and uh and we can review those. Uh, uh, a question I have is can we review those like highlighted uh when we get that second reading? Just to call out. Okay, great. Um, is there any further discussion on this?
Counselor Booton?
Yeah, so I look at this similar to the requirements for a bachelor's degree on when you're applying for a position. And people are going to look at this and they're not going to apply for, put a bid in, um, which will likely increase the cost for the city. Um, I'm not, I I don't, I don't think this is necessary. And I think it's just additional work that the city staff is going to have to deal with. And it doesn't matter because I'm outvoted on this.
And I hear you, Counselor Booton. And could I just ask, uh, Mr. Manager, as the representative of the administration, is it your recommendation that we move forward?
Yeah, I I'm I'm supportive of this. I think, um, you know, generally speaking, Mr. Smith, wherever he is, I think, made the point, which I believe, which is that paying city residents in particular, I think I was particularly excited about the provision about paying city residents for incentivizing that. Um, and uh, keeping money circulating in the city is a good thing. So I believe that there's ancillary benefits that will come from from doing this. In addition to, I I happen to believe that um that union work sites are safer and um and they're certified and et cetera, et cetera. So I do believe there's ancillary benefits and we've worked real close with Counselor Wazak to um really minimize the administrative and operational challenges that something like this could could cause. Um, so I'm comfortable that we can reap the benefits of something like this while while um minimizing the operational challenges.
Thank you. Counselor Lozon?
There's a.
Further discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Um, yeah, so I just want to be clear. So you're going to incorporate uh what we discuss. And if if I want to discuss other issues with you, just contact you.
Yeah, give me a.
Second reading. So, you know, we do have two weeks to react to the second reading. And so we do have two weeks to communicate and two weeks for folks to communicate with us. Um, what I'm hearing from the clerk is that we can go to as many second readings as we want. So if we want to make further changes, you know, we can do that. So um, yeah, understanding all of that, I'll move, I'll let, I will vote in the affirmative. But I want to understand, you know, I do have concerns about the city's ability to um attract competitive bids. Uh, I I don't know. I mean, in the current environment, when we bid our paving projects, there were a lot of, a lot of names I expected to see on that list who weren't on that list. And when I asked them why they didn't bid the project, it's because no one has enough help and everybody's got too much work. So, so I don't know that we could necessarily draw the conclusion that that's why uh people aren't going to bid, you know, for now. I'll keep an open mind with it, but I'll, you know, and Davis Bacon, are you going to do that? The Davis Bacon reconciliation, you know, the federal level reconci- so you're going to do that? I don't have to worry worry about doing that. Okay. No, I mean, I think we keep an open mind and and if folks uh, you know, contractors want to react to it, um, I look forward to hearing from them.
Great. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Comment.
And then Counselor.
Yeah, so I remember being on council with uh Counselor Lozon as mayor. Um, and we had a similar conversation about bids and going with the low bid versus other reasons. And we decided because we were noticing that people weren't bidding because we weren't going with the low bid. It was based on personal feelings. Um, and we changed that. Um, and I just got a feeling that this is just going back to the old way. That's okay.
Well, having a discussion.
Having a, well, it's going to pass. I mean.
Nor I just, I I just want to respectfully push back on the implication of going back to the old way as in hiring people that we knew. I, my father was a carpenter, but I could not, I don't know every contractor in Berry. Um, I think that what this does is that it sets a standard for how how we treat the folks who are doing the work uh for the city on large-scale projects. And I think that paying them decent wages, giving them benefits, I think that that's all completely something reasonable that we should be doing. Um, and I had one more point, which is gone, so never mind. Counselor Deering?
Just my point of view is that typically we don't make laws or ordinances unless we see problems. We haven't really seen a problem with that here in Berry City. And that's just really my two cents. I'm going to vote in the affirmative this evening to support this, to push it along. But I'd really be cautious as to whether more government involvement is necessary um and is really going to help the city of Berry.
Understood. And I think it's the, this, it is the job of government to be proactive to improve people's economic situations, and that's the spirit with which I approached this.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh, and I have to do roll call. Oh, there's votes, I got to do a roll call anyway. Uh, Counselor Lozon?
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
Counselor Shombel?
Aye.
Counselor Stockwell?
Aye.
Counselor Booton?
Nay.
Counselor Wazak?
Aye.
Counselor Deering?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. That takes us to, yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks for the, all the great work. Uh, that takes us to approval of the 2023-2025 strategic plan.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, this was tabled at the last meeting, so we will have to have a motion to take it off the table before it can be considered.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
There was a motion and a second, yes.
There's a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. It's taken off the table. And uh, Minister Shirley Castro, can you just uh quickly brief us on just the process it's been through since I know it's uh, it's been on the, on the, on the table for a bit?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So um, uh, we started, we got some comment, the Counselor Lozon made some, some uh requested some edits last time we discussed this um before it was tabled. Um, and those have been incorporated. I thought they were very valuable edits, which I'm, um, I think the the one key one which I am ashamed to, I didn't catch, was about making um, you know, making sure the city continues to be a great employer. Um, and so we've made all that, uh, made all those conforming changes through the various parts of the document. And that is the only difference from what you have here. And then the first version you got, those incorporating Counselor Lozon's edits from a couple of weeks ago. Um, other than that, you know, I think um I found this process myself to be incredibly helpful. Um, started a little bit before I got here, but uh got to participate even before I had started in in um in a retreat. Um, had some great one-on-one conversations. I know, um, worked with the design team, uh, Counselor Shombel and Counselor Deering, who um, we had some great conversations with the design team as well. So um, I think this is our document. I I think this is uh getting us in the right direction. Um, so I think with that, I'll leave it to the council's discussion.
Great. Is there uh uh any discussion before a motion's made?
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Counselor Stockwell?
I note that at one point we discussed having an evaluation of what is buildable land in the city. And I didn't see it in here. I don't know if that's important to put in the plan or or not.
Um, we could certainly include that maybe as um, you know, we 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 have to work on measurable results. I think one of the um, one of the next steps for us at the staff level is to start working on the measurable results and maybe having an assessment of buildable land could be one of the measurable result, measurable results for some of the goals in here.
Numbered.
Any, any objections to that proposal to the do an assessment of um buildable, buildable areas or op- high opportunities for redevelopment?
I I don't know if it's an objection, but Counselor Lozon has his hand.
Oh, no, 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 no objection to that.
Okay.
Sorry, different issue.
It's a separate thing. So it was Counselor Lozon and then Amy's hand was after that.
Um, how often do we revisit our strategic plan? Um, you know, how often does counsel? You know, things change and sometimes things change really quickly. So I just want to know will we be, you know, I I mean, I could nitpick at this, you know, all night long because that's how I roll. But uh, or I could just say, look, let's move it along and get to work here. Um, and I'd prefer to do the latter. Um, but I'll be a lot more comfortable doing that, knowing that, hey, you're going to, we're going to review this every uh three months or six months or every year. And or if a counselor says, hey, I'd like to, I'd like to make something a a little more of a priority in our strategic plan, that that counsel would be heard. Yeah, I don't know how the council feels about that or how the manager feels about that.
I mean, I can share what I feel from my perspective and and it's similar to what I've shared about the capital improvement plan. I think those are things we need to look at annually um and at least. Um, and so um, my my, you know, we we won't be able to do it with a with a consultant again because that, you know, that's expensive. But um, I think as a, as the council as a body and what the administration sort of. But I think as a, as the council as a body and what the administration sort of a retreat type event would be important to revisit these to make sure we're moving in the right direction, also to hold ourselves accountable to what's in here. So I think that just like the capital plan will come back on an annual basis, I think this would be part of that as well. To make sure we're moving in the right direction and, and to, and like I said, to be accountable to what's in here.
Thank you.
And it just doesn't have further explanation before going to Amy. I recall when, when Bill Fraser first came in to talk about Montpelier's process with their assistant city manager, Cameron, I'm, Niedermeyer, Cameron Niedermeyer, who led that strategic planning process. They built that as an, it took a while to build the first document, but then they went and did that as an annual kind of check-in, update in recognition that councils change priorities can shift a little bit. But it helps guide the, the shared priorities and a common work plan as, on an annual basis. So I really like the idea of potentially thinking about this as a, a summer, late summer update, but I know we haven't looked at our calendar yet that far, but I, I think we had the retreat last June, was it Nicholas? Right when you started?
Yeah, the retreat was June, before I started from my in-laws basement, so.
Not that you're bitter.
I think I remember there, maybe there were some cats behind you.
Yeah, there was, there was.
All right. So, all right. So maybe, maybe something like that cycle.
Yeah.
Amy Gelford.
No, it's late, so I'll try to be quick, but I, I'm one of those nerds who like strategic planning. You know, I, I worked in a small group at a university and worked for someone who was really good at strategic planning. And a lot of what she focused on was keeping things very narrow and specific. It was, it was kind of a focus of what things are we going to try? Pick a few things that we're really going to emphasize and try to finish and move forward in the next couple of years, and then we'll revisit it later. And if something worked out great, we'll do more of it. If it was a flop, we'll stop doing it, that sort of thing. So my overall reaction is just, this is really a lot and ambitious, particularly in a, in a three-year cycle. Or some things that may be hard to move the needle on them in a, in a three-year window. So I guess just depends on how you treat it as a year-to-year thing, or if you're saying like, we're going to do this in three years. There's a, the footnote has 2022 to 2024 in it, like at the bottom of the pages. So I'm a little confused about the year. Maybe it just with, with the, the time lag on things. And hopefully it's, that's just a type of kind of thing. You know, I had a sort of a gut reaction to, I'm not a huge fan of mission and vision statements, but this did catch my eye. A couple of things that had changed about it. The original ones in the, in the bottom were a little bit punchier and to me they sounded a little bit more like what Berry is to me versus the ones that are in the final document, sound like they could be any town, anywhere in the country. And they're so broad that they're completely unobjectionable, which in some ways might mean you're not being strategic. Like a strategic plan should be a little bit, it should be pushing you in a direction. It shouldn't please everyone forever, but that's just my take on it. Environmental stewardship disappeared from the vision. Not a fan of that. And the word affordable appears later, but it dropped from the mission. And I don't like that. That's part of why I picked Berry to live, because it's affordable. I couldn't afford to buy a house in Montpelier, even though that was where I worked. I couldn't afford in Chittenden County. Like, I'm okay living in an affordable city. That's part of why I settled here. And I don't think that's a shameful thing. So the affordable shows up later, but I, I did notice that dropped off the, the front of it. I know I've made this comment at other meetings before about the growing the grand list and have a peeve with that. Like, what does growing the grand list mean? Does that mean everybody's property value goes up and our per-value tax rate goes down? Does it mean we're trying, which makes it more affordable? Are we trying to grow the grand list so that we have more money to take care of our infrastructure problems? And those are both totally legitimate goals, but they're different things. And the growing the grand list phrase doesn't, doesn't get at what you're actually trying to do with that. I noticed the word safer with an R on the end in a couple of places. That implies the city is not safe. I don't like that language being in there. Trying to make it safer, that's kind of implying it's unsafe. And I don't like that as a marketing tool for the city. On the other hand, of course, everyone would want the city to be safer, but that language was a little puzzling to me. And then there's a few things in there that I was a little puzzled about the relationship between the city and the town that's reflected in a couple of different ways. And this document with Berry Area Development Corporation with different utilities, with some things being cooperating, with some things trying to make sure we're looking out for the city. And it's, it's a couple of different things going on there. So that's just a general comment that I noticed on there. I'm not sure what this is saying about our relationship with the town.
Thank you for those comments. So is there, recognizing that this is a first go at this and that we'll have an annual opportunity to refine and update it? Is there a motion to approve?
We already have a motion on the table, Mayor.
I'm sorry. So there's a motion and a second to approve. All those and any further discussion? I'm sorry, guys.
Wait, wait, wait.
Aye.
Okay, yeah, we need the roll call, but before we do the roll call, Counsel Booton has his hand up?
Oh, okay.
So we're still planning on renegotiating our, our business with Berry Area Development?
Or not?
Well, that's what, that's what it says. And I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that we're going to take a look at this every single year after March. Because as I've stated multiple times over and over again, one year on a city council, a switch can immediately change the strategic plan. But.
Yeah, and I would just, you know, Counsel, I, I, I completely agree with you. And at my place of work, I've been there for a little over two years. And when I was hired, I was told that we were in the middle of a six-month strategic planning process. It is two years later and we don't have a strategic plan. So I, I also appreciate what Amy said about the mission and vision and value statements. I agree that those can basically just get word saladed down to where we want a place that's nice to live. It's like, yeah, okay, great. But I, I think that, I don't think this document commits us to doing everything that's written down right now over the next couple of years. I think it provides a starting point. And if there's actions that a majority of the council does not want to take, you can.
So I'll just say that it would be an affirmative vote if we got rid of that. So if you want to get rid of that portion, then the renegotiation of the Berry Area Development. Because I, I mean, I could make comments about this and I'm, I'm going to withhold my comments on it. But I would like to see it removed. Otherwise, we're doing a roll call.
Well, now we got a comment. What if we change that word to evaluate? I read it a little differently. I think all of you know how I feel about the Berry Partnership and Barrierary Development. But what I noticed is that the referral section to Barrier Development was under housing.
Right.
Historically, we have not had barrier development. They, they've been more a, they've been more an advocacy point for business, not for housing. We've certainly changed that role with Prospect Heights Development and with their involvement with the Northern Regional Borders Commission grant, you know, we've certainly changed their role. So if we want to have, if we want to ask a may and barrier development to please focus more on housing, that's how I read it. So, I mean, instead of renegotiate, call it evaluate. You know, is, is there, is there something of greater value that we could have barrier, recognizing the value that they bring as an organization is, should we change their focus or ask them to change their focus on behalf of the city? That's how I read it.
Right. But is this a review, evaluate and potentially modify the current governance model of the Berry Area Development to ensure city leadership is effectively represented on the board? Review and enhance contractual oversight and monitoring of deliverables.
I'm okay with that too. If, if the gist is to have the city manager, because he's just hanging around with nothing to do, attend, no, attend their meeting and have a, and be a voting member. I don't have an issue with that because the barrier development has always encouraged the manager of the city and the town to participate, but they do, but they haven't gotten a vote. I don't have an issue with it. With the city having a vote, you know, one member of whatever, 15.
See, when I look at this, I see something a little bit different. I see a desire to push that position into a city position. But hey, it's all good.
I, I didn't, I didn't, I honestly, Michael, I don't see that reflected in the document. I think you know where that discussion will go with me. It won't go very far. But it, but I'm, I'm trying to have faith here and, you know.
It's been a long time. I've lost faith.
You need a hug, Michael.
All right. So there's a motion and a second. Counsel Lozon.
On the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah, aye.
Counsel Sean Bell.
Aye.
Counsel Stockwell.
Aye.
Counsel Booton.
Nay.
Counsel Wazza, Wazza Zach.
Aye.
And Counsel Deering.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. That takes us to Ward Day for Barbecues, and I thought it would be fun if to build on Counsel Wazza's suggestion to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, this got tabled also, so we'll need a motion to bring it off the table.
Second.
Keepin' us on this. You know, yeah, okay.
Aye.
Is, yeah. Well, hopefully this is unanimous. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it's taken off the table. So the pitch is consider August 20, or I'm sorry, June 24th with three barbecues, one in Rotary Park for Ward One, one in Courier Park for Ward Two and one in Wabi Park for Ward Three. Manager Starlee Castro is coordinated with Stephanie and Jeff to see if they're available on that date. They could be held at the same time or staggered, staggered a little bit. So Nicholas and I could bounce to each one. I'm willing to donate $50 for every picnic to help purchase some supplies and food. And I think we might need some, some other donations to pull this off and, and base an estimated attendance off of, I think in the past, may, they've been pretty leanly attended, but maybe we could get up to 20 to 25 people at each one. So that's the pitch.
There was a question in the room, Mr. Mayor, about staff, doing them all on one day and how the staff would make that work.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to set them up that morning. I mean, I don't think the staff does the cooking, do they?
I was thinking about staff being available and, and attending if they're.
Oh, yeah. So I, yeah, I think one idea we had talked about was staggering them so that there's a little bit of overlap at each one, which I think, I think gives enough time to, for people to migrate from, from barbecue to barbecue. So that's, my, my sense is we could make it work on one day.
So for an example, maybe Ward One would be 11:30 to one. Ward Two could be one to 2:30. Ward Three could be 2:30 to four, however, whatever the mix might be. It gives a little bit of a time spread. So staff that does want to show up can show up. And that the counselors would be in charge of pulling, pulling the food, food and food and equipment together.
I will not do those dates.
What were the dates?
June 24th.
June 24th.
Can't do the 24th, Michael?
No, it's the week of my, something's going on. None of your business.
Tell me, man.
It's not the city's business.
So that wouldn't work for Ward Two. Counselor Booton has a conflict. So might I suggest we council informally huddles and.
I, I'd say Teddy and I were able to figure something out the last time we did this, and I think we could do it again.
So rather than one set date, just have the wards figure out their respective dates?
So I think one, one disadvantage to that is it does, you know, if you do want staff to attend coordinating that, so you can't propose a date tonight. You can't, we can, can, can anybody commit to a date tonight?
Counsel.
Do we know, do we know when Spalding's graduating? That would be horrible to set this.
Earlier, early.
My guess is that it's.
Usually May, right?
No, no, it's in June.
My graduation was May 15th.
High school, not college.
Yeah, no, my, my high school graduation was May 15th. Yeah. Not here.
Last year was around.
That may actually, that 24th may actually be the first.
The 24th would work for me.
That's a Saturday?
Yeah, it's a Saturday in June.
It's like the last Saturday in June.
So moved.
We've agreed to do the barbecues. We can figure out the details through emails.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
Works for me.
Great. So there's a, a motion and a second to do the barbecues on June 24th and work out the details by email?
No. The June 24th or some day like that.
In the general vicinity of June 24th.
It's fine.
Seven days plus or minus?
All right, Mr. Mayor, how would you like to proceed?
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just a little fuzzy. So, so basically we're just saying we're going to figure this out later?
Yeah, well, well, yeah, we'll all just informally huddle with our respective ward mates and figure something out that works for us and the city staff. In the area of June 24th. And I would not suggest we make that an actual motion because that was very sloppy.
Then we won't.
Does Sarah want to comment on it? Is that why she got her?
And Sarah Hellman has her hand up.
There, I was just, just curious about what the purpose of, of these barbecues are, having never been to one. Yeah.
Believe it or not, Sarah, community building. They have historically been pre-COVID, they've been, I won't even say bipartisan, I'll say nonpartisan opportunities to interact with your city councilors and simply have a hot dog or ask me why I proposed an ordinance.
So I, additional history. We've only done this once and the barbecue was only done because of Teddy and I. And I'm just, and we, we didn't want to do just a boring get-together. We, we wanted to entertain. And we asked for permission to entertain at the BOR and we did. And we, we enjoyed ourselves and, I don't know, nobody bought beer and I didn't drink any, so we didn't enjoy ourselves too much.
Was it everybody? I mean, was it all three wards?
No, it was, it was, so it was all three wards that met, but we were the only ones that actually, you know, were doing something cool because we're like that.
All right. So to be determined later. That takes us to the authorization.
I will, you've got Dave on there who's probably going to ask about open meeting laws.
It's not a violation of open meeting law if there's only two counselors, if that's your question.
That's the way it should be.
No, I was just going to say Spalding graduation is the 17th, just.
Oh, thank you, Dave.
For picking dates.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Awesome.
And so that takes us to, E, the authorization of the manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement for the sale of the Wheelock House to Fox Market LLC. Manager Starlee Castro.
Thanks, Mayor. Counsel, I sent you a draft purchase and sale contract for execution on Monday after I received it. This contract, and I also sent you a property inspection contingency addendum. This has been reviewed by our city attorney. It includes, you know, there's, all of it's very important, but section 11 has the, I think, the most relevant pieces here. And those are the special conditions. And I'll just read those off. One is that both parties agree to attend a attorney review period. Two is that should the purchaser decide to resell the building, the city would have a right of first refusal. The specific details of that right of first refusal would be addressed in an addendum to be negotiated during the 10-day attorney review period. Number three is the purchasers will preserve the historic features of the building. The specific details of that would also be. The specific details of that would also be negotiated in a separate addendum. Also during that ten-day attorney review period, it would include specific deed restrictions, which we've discussed, which the council has discussed as as being a high priority. Number four is a reference to the state law requirements of a petitioning period. And number five, as the purchaser agrees to provide the city with a detailed plan and timeline for the renovations, as was requested by the council. The property inspection contingency addendum contains one special condition, which is that we want to incentivize the purchasers to do the inspection so that we know if there's going to be any issues with that. The condition here is that should the sale be voided through a petitioning process, the city would reimburse the purchaser for the cost of that inspection. So as I mentioned, City Attorney Oliver Twombly has reviewed this. The addenda that are referenced in this purchase and sale agreement would each come back to the council for approval. So you're not signing your life for the building away. You're just really authorizing me to to begin those negotiations with the purchasers that were selected. And those, like I said, those documents would come back for for your approval, hopefully as soon as the next meeting. What this will also do is allow the city to do the public notice for the in the in the times Argus that that triggers the all the charter and state law requirements as well. So that's it for me. Happy to answer any questions. But I believe this is consistent with the council's positions regarding the the sale.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go to members of the public first, if that works. Yep, Mr. Tober.
Thank you, Mr. Wazak.
Thank you, Mr. Tober.
I I was a little bit disappointed. I missed the last council meeting. I'm a member of an officer of an organization that has meetings on that night. It seemed to me strange that when you open, when you open up a seal sealed bidding, and then you make the decision as to who to bid to the same night, that that seems strange to me because the the members of the public have to basically look at what you've done that very day and make an immediate decision as to what is right or not. I know that the vast majority, my understanding is that the vast majority were in favor of the Fox Market project, but people were basically came into that meeting, I presume, unless somebody spoke out of turn ahead of time, came into that meeting not knowing what was going on as far as the facts in terms of the bids and so forth, so they were not making an informed and a an informed decision as far as where they would. And so basically, the members of the public who were there had to know ahead of time how they were going to speak. And I think that that did a disservice to the public that you were not allowing a time period for people to look at what the bids were and what the what the proposals were, and perhaps even, I looked in the I looked at the minutes of the meeting, I did not see, I did not watch the meeting itself to know whether the two side, the two bidders presented information. But it seems to me that 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 was kind of rushing things in terms of making the decision on that same day. And so I would urge you going forward to have a reflection period, give the people of the city of Berry an opportunity to look at what the proposals are so they can make an informed judgment and give you informed reactions of what they believe should be happening with the project. And so that that's done in future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tober.
All right, I saw, did you have?
Yes.
Yeah, Counselor Lozon and Booton.
Thank you. So I I just want to make sure that I I understand a couple of things here, Nicholas. So the parties are agreeing to attend a attorney review period, meaning that either of the parties can substantially change the contract during the attorney review period?
I don't think substantially changed. That really, the ten-day review period is really to give us time to negotiate those addenda. Okay, that that are the special conditions.
Because under addenda five, so you know, as I've made clear through the whole process, I'm interested in the renovation and preservation of the building. So this five requires the purchaser to provide the city with a detailed plan and timeline for renovations upgrades to one thirty-five North Main Street. So technically, and I'm not saying, but if if one or more of the council didn't like the plan, as long as the plan has been submitted, it doesn't matter whether we like it or not, does it? I mean, submitting the plan fulfills the contractual obligation, and when we discuss it, when, I mean, I certainly made it known to the council, I was interested in a renovation and preservation plan, and I wanted to see what that looked like. But and maybe I didn't say, gee, and I'd like to, I'd like to, the council to have the ability to to say, well, we like it or we don't like it at all.
Right. I mean, the way.
And this just, this just doesn't do that. And so I I have an objection to that. And if it was changed as subject to council review, I could certainly support it, but and then where it talks about the special election, I would have been a hard no regardless of anyone we signed the contract with. I think it was the mayor who first put that charter change into effect approximately approximately a year ago. So that's no big surprise. I mean, the charter language allowing our voters to final approval has been there for a year, so I don't see why we should be.
This is just a reference to it. It doesn't.
It's we're paying, but we're paying for the inspection.
But but if our city, if voters choose to exercise a right, and I'm not advocating before the before folks draw conclusions, I'm not advocating one way or the other, but I'm saying that I I just I have a real hard time reimbursing anyone for a charter provision that was there all along. It was, it's been there for a year. And I I just have an issue with that. Maybe maybe the rest of you don't, but we certainly didn't discuss that last week in executive session, and it just sort of popped in there, and I object, but that's just me.
All right, so we've got the ten days. By the ten days, we'll have the plan.
So the the plan has to come before the closing. I don't know if they'll have the plan in the ten days. No, I don't believe they'll have the plan in the ten days. So days is really to allow us to negotiate items to.
So for, well, for clarity, I'm just gonna say that. So the plan isn't going to be available. So if somebody, let's say the plan does come back and it's actually a terrible plan, but the thirty days have passed, now you can't do anything. And you know, I it, this whole process, I've I've hated this whole process. It was not transparent. It was pushed very quickly. And I I just don't think we should be selling the building, but to to have it so that there's no public ability to digest a plan before it's done is a problem for me. And and I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult to you. It's just it's a, it's a problem for me. Ultimately, it doesn't matter because I don't think that anyone's going to change their opinion on this, so.
Counselor Deering and then Stockwell.
Just gonna state my opinion of this matters, that last week, we had very little time to digest anything. People pushed this matter, so we had a vote, and that is why I voted no for this last week. Because we had so many people here that we couldn't even get people in the door. We couldn't get enough people onto the Zoom meeting to get their expressions out there. So we had plenty of people reaching out the next day, and have continued, made a decision last week, or two weeks ago, sorry. I just feel like we're constantly rushing this decision. That's my two cents.
Counselor Stockwell, then myself.
Frankly, this process has taken months, and we've heard from people through email for months, and we've heard from people, and it's been really clear what people have been saying, what the majority of people have been saying, and what the offers are. So, I mean, that's our response to that. But the other thing is that we agreed that they were going to have to follow the National Historic Preservation Guidelines in in redoing the building. So that really is, they can't put up plastic shutters, you know, you can't. So you have that that already in the contract, and that's going to direct what they can and cannot do. And they need to have some autonomy in what how they decide that the inside of the building, but they discussed that when they were here, so. I'm done.
Yeah, I was echoing what Counselor Stockwell said. It's the months, this process with the Wheelock House has been going on for years. We had a, we had a public hearing three plus years ago when the teen center idea was getting knocked about. The, we had public hearings before we agreed to sell the building and to even list the building in the first place, multiple council meetings, hours and hours and hours of discussion. And both bidders made their made their bids, and most details, not everything, but most details of the bid were public before the meeting happened. So I don't think that that, in my view, passes muster, and the decision has been made. We made, we we took the vote two weeks ago. This is not, this is just going through with what the council voted to do two weeks ago. Counselors, let's go down the line. Booton, Shambal.
All right, so the bids haven't been released, correct? The documents that we received, you know, the ones that outline what they have, yeah. So that's not even out there for public consumption, for people to even opine on. And we're we're just moving forward on this. We're moving forward without the agreement, the addendums on it. I I know what we discussed in executive session, but people out in the public don't. There's, again, this, the the transparency on this is a huge issue for me. And we are talking about a building that has been within the public's possession for well, since before I was born. And and I, you know, there's, there's a lot of sentimental feelings towards that building, and not knowing what's going to happen to it after we just hand the keys over is a huge problem for me and a lot of people in our community. Ones that may not have been, you know, here on Tuesday night two weeks ago, but certainly would have a say in it.
Counselor Shambal.
In terms of not having enough time, I think we've had a fair amount of time to ponder this ever since we started the conversation. And as soon as the first, you know, when the LLC got put into the newspaper, that started the ball rolling. And before we even had the meeting the other night, people knew it was Fox. I had been getting letters all week long. And so it's not as though it was a surprise. A lot of people seem to know about it. And a lot of people showed up. And I'm sure most of us came in here with one lean or the other, quite honestly. And and we took the vote, and I think it's, I think it behooves us when we make a decision to stay with our decision.
Counselor Lozon?
I am. I I absolutely am. I have been steadfastly consistent through this whole thing. My issue is not with the name on the purchase and sales agreement as the buyer. My issue is with the content of the purchase and sales agreement and what was discussed by the council in terms of what, well, what was discussed by me in terms of what I shared with the council in terms of what I wanted to see. And, you know, one of the things that we didn't see was a reimbursement for a for a property inspection under any possibility. And that certainly is no fault of the council. I mean, that's at a certain point, buyers, plural, need to do their own due diligence, and they need to know the environment under which they're submitting their offer. And if the city has a provision that says, look, if if there is a petition, voters get the final say. Well, that's not a condition that the council imposed on them. That is that is unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to view it, a condition of the city charter. And and, you know, one that was supported by a majority of the council approximately a year ago, so it had nothing to do with us. So again, my my issue is not with the name on, I'm fine with the name, with the name on the purchase and sales agreement. It's it's the condition that I have expressed all along to the council that I want to see the building preserved and restored. And there's nothing in this purchase and sales agreement that gives me any comfort. I mean, I I believe people when they say things, but there's certainly nothing with any teeth that gives me any comfort that that building is going to be restored. And the preservation, you know, the preservation guidelines that you're referring to only kick in when a certain threshold is, you know, if you're slowly making improvements to a property, preservation guidelines do not necessarily kick in. So we'll see.
I'll jump in and say, you know, I recollect when the city sold the there was a land sale of city-owned property in East Montpelier not that long ago. And by comparison, this has been much more deliberate, much more public notice, much more transparent than any real estate transaction that the that I've been a part of in my three years on council, particularly more transparent than that transaction. I think, you know, I think this is also a question of, is Berry open for business or not? Are we going to be a council that creates, that shows that we're steady people who people can do business with, that investors are going to say, boy, that's a city where I feel like I can invest in because I know there's going to be a steady governing body who can follow through and can and conduct business in a normal way. This is, to me, seems like above and beyond the normal way in terms of the protections that the city's putting in place to ensure the preservation of historic features with best practices. And and they're not asking for tax stabilization. I mean, these are very earnest, hardworking entrepreneurs that I I can't believe how impressed I am by how willing they are to be a good community partner, and how badly they want to be a part of our downtown and of our business community and do things right. And and then they've subjected themselves to that public process because I think they're earnest. And they want to be here, and 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 I want Berry to look like we're open for business. And and these conditions, I think, are really very reasonable. And and I think put the protections in place that need to be be in place to 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 move forward. So it's it's time to act, and it's time to get stuff done. And and, you know, they're not, they're not asking, I I said it before, they're not asking for tax stabilization. You know, there's lots of other people who've gotten thousands and thousands of dollars of of tax write-offs from the city. And here, all they're asking for is, can we get can we get our inspection fees reimbursed if 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 the voters were to to turn this down, which I I I believe the voters, even if it were petitioned, would overwhelmingly approve this because people are tired of vacant, underused storefronts downtown. They want to see new business. They want to see vitality. So it's pretty clear where I stand. I'm going to be a yes vote on this.
Counselor Booton and then myself. Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, you mentioned stipulations, but I don't see any before me. So I I mean, that goes to the point of transparency, and with all due respect to the property over in East Montpelier, completely different than the the building that has sat in our downtown since eighteen hundreds. It it just completely different. But hey, you know what? That's fine. What I, no, I'm done.
So stipulations as in the purchase and sale contract, Counselor Wazak. Special conditions, both parties agree to attend a attorney review period. Condition two, should the purchaser decide to resell, all parties agree that the seller will have the first right of refusal to buy back. Specific details of right of first refusal to be addressed in separate addendum. Number three, purchasers agree to preserve historic features of the building. Specific details of historic preservation efforts to be detailed in a separate addendum. Number four, both parties understand that the sale of the property is contingent upon satisfaction of Berry City Charter public petition period. According to Berry City Charter, seller needs to publish publicly post-notice of pending sale for thirty days before conveyance. If five percent of city voters sign petition objecting to the sale and submit to the city, the question of the sale would then to be put to the voters in a special election. Number five, purchaser agrees to provide the city of Berry a detailed plan and timeline for renovations upgrades to one three-five North Main Street, Berry, Vermont. So respectfully, Counselor, there are your stipulations, and I'll make the motion to. to 135 North Main Street, Berry, Vermont. So respectfully, Counselor, there are your stipulations and I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion?
Counselor Deering.
So I'd just like to point out the irony of how we don't want to have extra government oversight with this building, but we want to have extra government oversight when we're talking about construction projects or infrastructure over $200,000.
Apples and oranges, Counselor.
Correct, sure. But that's my comment. So I feel it is what it is. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
God, no.
Counselor Shambal.
Oh, I didn't have anything to say.
Calling the votes.
Yes.
Counselor Wazazak.
Aye.
Counselor Stockwell.
Aye.
Counselor Lozon.
No.
Counselor Booton.
Nay.
Counselor Deering.
Aye.
And I am an aye. That takes us to the authorization for $56,284.59 for a sole source contract for the Garfield Play, Playground Equipment.
So moved.
Second. Third.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, guys have it. Is there a preview for upcoming business manager, Sterling Castro?
We have potentially, if it's ready, a conversation about Ideal, which council had the presentation a couple of months ago from the state. So we have something from D and E committee to review there. We're going to have demonstration and request for a, a contract with ClearGov, which is a budgeting software, trying to bring our budgeting operations up to speed. I'm trying to think, clerk Dawson from our department had many of the others, but those are the only ones coming to mind.
It was on your list.
It was on my list and I'm forgetting. So those two and maybe more.
And so in the second hearing for the, the ordinance, that's not, is that in two weeks or in four weeks?
I think it, it could be. I mean, we'll, I'll connect with Counsel Wazazak.
Yeah, I'll be ready.
Any other upcoming business that counselors want to preview?
So we meet in two weeks on Monday, Monday, the eighth, or Monday, the eighth.
Yeah.
Because of the school board. Oh, okay.
Oh, that's right. Good reminder. All right, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to roundtable. I'll, I'll start with Ward Three, Counselor, Counselor Stockwell.
I'm so pleased that Garfield Park is going to move forward and it's been, Stephanie has done such an excellent job. I just wanted to note she communicates so easily and so well with a variety of people. She takes in feedback and she moves really quickly. It's just been, I think it's been rewarding for everyone. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Counsel Deering.
I'll piggyback a little bit off of Stephanie. We didn't have any open gyms scheduled this week and the kids are on vacation. So I will be hosting an open gym from one to three on Thursday. Bring your sneakers, come in the back door. It's supposed to be $2 to get in. If you don't have your $2, we're not going to shake you down. But come play some basketball, have some fun. Two, Thursday, one, two, three o'clock.
Counselor Booton?
Pass.
Counselor Wazazak?
Pass.
Counselor Lozon?
Thank you. So this week, Prospect Heights Development submitted their L O Y to the Northern Regional Borders Commission. We are seeking a $3 million grant. I, I think all of you are aware, I mean, we appointed the manager as the city's representative. What I don't think we've talked about is that I was asked to join their board. It's a great group of people from, you know, the medical center, from Downstreet, people who really bring, the town of Berry is represented, people who are really bringing a lot of energy. I was honored when they asked me to service the president of the organization, so so I will be doing that for, well, we'll see how long, but you know, this is a real opportunity. You'll be hearing a lot more about this because I think this is a real opportunity for the city. We talk a lot about growing the grant list. I mean, this has the potential to grow our grant list exponentially and provide, you know, housing that really goes from soup to nuts, that, that spans, you know, all socioeconomic backgrounds. So I'm just real excited about this project. We find a lot to disagree about, and that's okay. We're all individuals, but I hope we can all, you know, this summer, we can all really pull in the same direction and move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lozon. Counsel Shambal. Oh, you, I started with you. No, I didn't. I'm sorry.
And I hope you feel better.
So piggybacking on Counselor Lozon. It's been, I think it's been a good meeting tonight. There's been a lot of controversy and conflict of opinions or just different opinions, but I think it's worked out. And I think people are ultimately working together. So I thank people for that.
Thank you, Counselor Shambal. And, and I'm, I'm excited for Green Up Day on May 6th. I hope everybody grabs, grabs a bag and sign up, signs up for Ruth. There's many, many little spots in the city where things accumulate. It makes all the difference and and I know I don't see our, our Public Service Advisor for TIC help, but as always, be, watch out for ticks and, and be on guard for Lyme disease. I also wanted to just say thank you to Downstreet Housing and Community Development. They held their annual meeting on the 17th, Monday, the 17th, in the old Labor Hall. And they had a slide thanking Berry City and its citizens for its support of the Ward Five School renovation. And it sounds like they're, will be getting that moving potentially as early as, as July. So that is really exciting to see them get their final approvals and, and see an old historic asset like that back into, back into productive use. And with that, I will pass. Any last word from our manager or clerk?
Okay, adjourned, seconded.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn at 10:11. All those in favor say aye. As have it.
It is. It's going to be good.